Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. It is now 7:00 PM. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John Reed is in prayer.
You stand, all aheads. Heavenly Father, bless tonight's proceedings. Help the council to be mindful of our elected responsibilities and mindful of the people who we serve. Give us each the wisdom to govern with fortitude, integrity, and compassion. Amen.
Angel, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lichardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman Padula.
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Before we move on, can we just make sure our cellphones are on vibrate or silent? Also, one person at a time speaking up here, please, for the record. And also, no yelling from the crowd. If you become ruly, overruly, you will be asked to leave. If you need to say something, you can stand in line, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Town manager's contract resolved that the town council hereby approves the attached contract by and between the town council of the town of West Warwick and Ernest M. Zimlinsky.
Zimlinsky.
Zimlinsky, town manager, town of West Warwick. Be it further resolved that the council president is authorized to sign said contract, subject to review and approval of the town solicitor and the administration.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the resolution.
Moving second. Discussion. As you know, everybody here has seen the contract. We've gone over it. It's been sent to Ernest Zimlinsky. He's given, as long as we approve it, he's given his notice to, is there a doorbell somewhere downstairs? Somebody keeps ringing a doorbell.
That's the back door.
So, this has been back and forth between Ernest and myself. He agrees upon, starting October 10th. Few other bullet points. The salary is $118,000, as it is in the budget. Can we make sure our cellphones are on silent, please? With that being said, is there any other comments from the council?
It's pretty straightforward.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Minutes of previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the August 1st, 2017 town council meeting are hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
To the minutes?
To the minutes. And I'll tell you why. I looked them over. A lot has come out in the last month regarding the minutes, especially the item where Mr. Reed came up at the end. He spoke for a while, mentioned issues with the planning board, the Attorney General, litigation with the town. There's only five lines in the minutes. And I know he said a lot more than that, quite a bit more than that. So personally, I don't want to be caught in some legal issue if I approve these minutes.
Okay.
So that's basically...
You know, I agree. Jason's right, brief and through the minutes. People that come up make comments. It's not on paper. It's on the video, and I myself is not going to vote to accept the minutes.
Okay. And just for the record, the minutes are not the record. The tape is the record.
I understand that.
So whatever Mr. Reed said at the microphone is on record. It is recorded.
We know that too, but what, and we've been discussing this for a couple times now, it should be also on the minutes. You have your PowerPoint.
But if you want, but if you want a minute by minute, we don't, neither, none of the clerks are stenographers. If you want a stenographer here at every council meeting to put down every minute, and we've had that in the past, that's the only way you're going to get every word in here verbatim is a stenographer. And none of our clerks are stenographers.
I'm not asking for every word.
So do you want to hire a stenographer or hire one to the clerk's office? Because that's the only way you're going to get every word by word.
You're missing my point. There were some, some words that I mentioned here. The AG, litigation, the planning board, things that have come out that I, I just don't want to be part of.
Okay.
So, and that's why. And I'm not asking Mary Ann to put word for word in there. I understand, no, believe me. But I just don't want to be part of it. I don't feel comfortable.
You can't put every word.
All right, next.
Consent agenda is resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those licenses have been approved. St. Joseph's School for Laurie Rossi, Christ the King Church, St. Joseph's School Club Front Neck, Sparrow Johnson and Rossillo, Hold Steady Tattoo, L&amp;L Roofing, Brazilian Way House Cleaning, Get Korea Services, Vital Instincts, House of Liquors, Unique Fitness, Cake Station, The Moo Mobile, and they've all been approved.
Consent agenda's correspondence resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Additions and cancellations of taxes resolved that the attached additions in the amount of $907.68 and cancellations in the amount of $13,140.6 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Cancellation of taxes resolved that the attached cancellation in the amount of $10,974.76 presented to the tax collector for approval of the town council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. Original list is on file in the office of the tax collector.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
MDT's tablet purchase resolved that the town council hereby approves the two mobile data terminals. MDT's purchased two Island Tech services. The cost of the Gedac F-110 rugged tablet and the mounting equipment and accessories is $5,597 per tablet, two units at $11,194. The purchase would be funded in the following manner. Municipal court funds $11,194.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Discussion?
Thank you. As you know, in the past, obviously the councilmen that have been here a while realize the new councilmen. In the past, we have the municipal court. So much of the revenue that comes in from, from our accident reduction details or whatever other details we may do on that, that's a restricted account that some money is returned to us to use to purchase. Many times we'll buy new laser guns, new radar guns, MDT's like we're doing this year, which we've done in the past, or other equipment for the police department. It's an alternative source of revenue, not coming out of our budget, not coming out of our capital budget. So it's just using an alternative source to be able to purchase a couple of computers for our vehicles.
Question. How often does that come to you, chief? Do you get it quarterly, yearly, or?
As far as how often do we purchase items?
No, how, do those funds come into you?
Basically, once a year, we usually do it. Once a year, we'll buy whether it's radar guns, this particular time, MDT's.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Claims resolved that the town council hereby denies the following claim against the town. Reed's Landscape Construction Inc., 55 Industrial Lane, Lot 18, Lot 246.
I'll move the resolution for discussion.
I'll second.
Moving second. Discussion. Myself, Tim Williamson, the solicitor, Al DiFiore, the attorney for planning board. Mark's had conversations about this, and their recommendation is to deny the claim. And based upon, Mark, if you want to speak more since you're the planning, I mean, you're playing dual role right now, but, and then we could let Mr. DiFiore speak on it if you'd like.
Well, you want me to address the claim as it's defended?
Yes, the claim as is.
So I, I got a copy of the claim on Friday, and I reviewed it, actually reviewed it today. And basically, the claim states that by the recording of an administrative subdivision, more or less, a right of way or public right of way was dedicated to the town. That's technically incorrect. And the attorney is also claiming that the planning department or the town planner violated Rhode Island general law in recording an administrative subdivision after the fact that eliminated the right of way. That is, in fact, also incorrect. There are several avenues for creating public rights of way under Rhode Island general law, all of them requiring a public hearing and acceptance by the town council or the planning board in a recording of a deed. None of that happened. While there was a representation on a map that says right of way, so-called Noon's Lane, that right of way is a private right of way and contained totally and wholly on private property. So there is no public right of way there. And that is the claim in the, in the attorney's letter. So I would say that based on the fact that he's claiming there's a public right of way as a result of the subdivision being recorded is incorrect. There was no transfer of land from the property owner to the town. There is no acceptance of a right of way by the council, and there was no public hearing establishing a right of way. So on all of those counts, which are contained, and I can give you the sections of Rhode Island general law that address those, there was actually no right of way. So I, so I would say that this claim is unfounded.
I just, if I'm not mistaken now, I just got a few questions. I mean, right, wrong, or indifferent, that goes to court, whatever Reed's and Foren Properties, that, that's got to be settled in court. But I have a few concerns. First of all, the street's named Noon's Lane, so the town don't own that with a town sign, number one. Number two, there's been some, I've seen some documents that were filed with the town, and it's sort of disturbing to me. And I sat on the planning board for quite a few years. When someone files a legal document, that legal document is stamped and put into our records. That, from what I can see, was not the one that was filed. There was another paper filed, and I apologize, I had both papers, and I left them down my shop with all this other stuff. I have a concern with that. I also have a concern when Mr. Reed came up here last week, and he said he could change the agenda on the planning board, change the dates. He showed each and every one of us that. I have another concern.
Can I, can I address that one concern?
Well, you can address them all, but I just want to get the other ones out. My other concern was, I lost my train of thought. Go ahead, address it. I'll think about it.
Well, I, I went home and did exactly what Mr. Reed said. When you download something to your computer in Excel format, you download it to your computer, okay? You can enable editing at any point, okay? And at that point, you can enable editing and do whatever you want to that document. But when you hit save, it doesn't save to the town website. It's saved to a directory or a drive in your computer, whether it's a C drive, whatever drive you save it to, you can save it to your desktop. You have altered the document, but that's not the correct public document. So I can alter anything I want. I can download, I get files every single day at work from people that have Excel format. I click enable editing, I can change whatever I want, I can change any number, I can change any address, I can change any name. Once I hit save, if John sent it to me, he still has the original. I have the altered document, it's saved to my computer, not to the town website. And that's where the confusion came in. There was absolutely zero, nobody can actually save it to the town website. And if I click save, it does not save to the town website, as possibly some have claimed that night. And that wasn't Mr. Reed who claimed that. He just, he never hit save, and he didn't know what it did. But if you download something to your computer, you can alter it in Excel. That's been corrected, everything is in PDF format now. You cannot do it unless you get the Excel, a PDF conversion to Excel, and then you'd have to do it that way. You could still do it in PDF, but you'd have to get the program to create from PDF to Excel. That's basic office.
And the other thing that's concerning is the claims meeting. I know we always met, when I was the president, you're meeting about, in the clerk's office, you meet with the solicitor, sometimes the department head, wherever it happened, you meet with the clerk. Right after that claims meeting, 15 minutes before the council meeting, it's automatically put on that agenda.
It can't be. It's going to be on the agenda for 48 hours before, so it's never been put on the agenda that night, Angela.
Well, you look back on it, and every one of them was put that same day that we met on the claims. Mary Ann, can you attest to that?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
They go on the agenda the next meeting.
Then how was this claim denied before we even met tonight?
It's denied, it's not denied. The council can approve the denial, it's a recommendation. And when we get the potholes and we get stuff like that, Angela, you've been here, where somebody says they had $6,000 worth of damage.
No, I, I understand all that.
And somebody says approve it, and you've denied it because you know how much the car parts cost.
Yeah.
You could do that here tonight. But right here, they're saying basically, according to this claim, is that they're asking us to overturn what the planning board did. I don't think legally we can even do that.
Well, if I...
Now, you can trust that.
First, no, you can't overturn the planning board.
Exactly.
Secondly, as to this, this whole thing about the record, a, a plan was submitted to the planning board. On that plan, it said Noon's Lane right of way or something. When I reviewed that plan, to me, that was a access to a piece of property in the back. Never in my wildest dreams did I take it as a public road. Unfortunately, I didn't realize I was going to be here tonight on this issue, but yesterday, it only happened yesterday, I was reading the case that is the stat, is the standard in Rhode Island. If a person comes before the planning board and submits a subdivision, and on that subdivision there is a right of way, like it's named here, there are two things that have to happen before that becomes a public way. First, it has to be accepted by the planning board and recorded. Secondly, the town must take possession. The town has done absolutely nothing in this town to take possession. The two cases, in one of them was exactly like this, they recorded a right of way, the, in that one, the person who recorded it said, "I intended to be a public right of way." Then the town did nothing. The Superior Court said, "It's not a right of way." The town never took ownership of it. The second case, when they took it over, the town went in, they extended it, they took the gravel out, they put asphalt in, the town actually took over the, the road. So by, by law, in order for this to have become public, the town would have had to take ownership of it. The town never took ownership of it. When it was submitted to the planning board, the then-owner of the land seeking the subdivision owned the entire parcel. He had access on one side, and he was looking for access, I believe, on Industrial Lane. So to his back piece of property, he put in access. He owned the whole thing. There was nobody that he was granting any rights to access to their property. So this was never, in the wildest dreams, a public right of way. I don't know whether the documents Angela was referring to are two different deeds. I have seen two different deeds, one of them including a right of way, one of them not including a right of way. We in the town had absolutely nothing to do with those deeds. Which deed was conveyed, which deed was recorded, that was between a buyer and a seller. The town has nothing to do with that.
Both, and, and both bodies are represented by council at their closing.
I assume so.
So my, my concern is, I don't, me personally, what I see here against the planning board, and that's why it became a denial, was because we can't overturn what the planning board did. We're taking away nobody's due process. This is just a claim that they sent to the council. The council, if denies or approves, he, they still have their due process. If they have to go to court, do whatever, again, it has, as Al's saying, we didn't record it. Somebody came in here and recorded it. Now, Mr. Reed has said some other individual has recorded it at this, whoever, buyer and seller have two different deeds. The issue is between them two, shouldn't be between the town and them.
I understand that. Isn't that legal document, Al? When you leave the planning board with an okay, you can't alter that document.
No one has altered that document.
Mark, was anything altered on that?
No. So, so I think there's some confusion here, councilman, in that what the planning board approves is a plan. And it's a, it's a large map with lines on it. That's what was approved by the planning board. That plan that was reviewed and approved by the planning board is the plan that was recorded. I think after the fact, as, as Mr. DiFiore had mentioned, there were, there, there's some, there's some discrepancy in deeds, a deed that may have been, that I, I reviewed some deed language. I personally reviewed some deed language, which is different than the deed that was recorded. However, the planning board, the planner, nor the town has any responsibility to review the deed. I was doing that as a courtesy to the, to the surveyor, to double check, to make sure there were no errors, which, you know, sometimes you find errors. But once, once the plan is recorded, that's the plan of record, the deeds after the fact can authorize access to easements or right of ways, or, or they may not authorize easement to access a right of ways. What it basically does is transfers a piece and rights of interest of property from one person to the other. That is not reviewed by the planning board. It was never seen by the planning board. It was seen by me as the planner. Now, when I saw, when the Reeds came in after the fact, upset that they didn't have access to an easement, they showed me a deed. That deed did not have the language of the deed that I reviewed. That was clear. I reached out to the seller's attorney, and I expressed to him the fact of what the Reeds had presented to me, assuming that the deed was recorded in error. Either that, it was an earlier version of the deed, or it was, it was just the wrong deed. The attorney then emailed me back, said he would check with his client. He apparently checked with his client, and responded several days later that the deed that was recorded is the deed of record, his client had no intention of providing access to a right of way. From that point forward is where all of the contention continues.
Two more points, Angela. First, at the time that the planning board acted, the property owner owned the entire parcel. He put on this parcel, this thing called Noon's Lane. You cannot grant yourself an easement. An easement has to go from one person to another person. He owned the whole thing. He couldn't grant anybody an easement because he owned it all. You can't grant yourself an easement, number one. Secondly, and David's raising an issue about overturning a planning board, when, when you go before a planning board, if you don't like the decision of the planning board, from the date that it gets recorded, you have 20 days to appeal it to the zoning board, and from the zoning board to the Superior Court. This party could not appeal it because they weren't party to it. They didn't own anything at that time. So at the time that it was recorded, this was a, I'll call it a driveway. I own the whole piece of property, I got a piece in the back, I built a driveway to get to it. That's the simplest explanation of this thing. Now somebody comes along and I sell them a piece of property up front. I sold them a piece of property. Unless they come to me and say, you know, "I'd like access off your driveway," there is none. And that's it in a nutshell. It just didn't make any sense to me, Al, because I just can't, I just can't get it through. Let's take, for instance, the property, I got the okay to put a 3,600 square foot building when I sold it. I can't put it up now because I can't afford the taxes, so I'm not putting up any buildings, number one. Number two, when we, when the person who bought that property off me that came for the, for the, to the planning board, to get the permission to build the building, we had to show where our doors are, where the entrance was going to be, where the exit was going to be, ingress and egress, we had to show all that. Now, when I put, if, if I do decide, or if I do sell the property and someone wants to put up that building, I can switch that egress and ingress inside out, turn it around? Angela, I can't comment because I'm assuming that your building probably needed some zoning relief of setbacks or something. That's a, that's a whole different ballgame. No, it didn't need any, any, we didn't have to go to zoning. But anyway, I just, I just can't understand if, if, if we okay one thing, and another thing transpires.
You're comparing apples and oranges.
And like I said, I wish Mr. Reed luck, I wish the seller's luck. I don't, I'm not concerned about that. What I'm concerned about is how the town does business. What you're, what you're talking about, when you talk about your piece of property and this piece of property, you're talking apples and oranges. They've got nothing to do with one another, Angela. They're not even close.
So, so Dave, to clarify, you're saying this is a civil matter at this point, correct?
Civil matters. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not taking away anybody's due process, I'm not taking away, as, as it was claimed, you still have a process. This is just a claim that we, the town feel, we have no responsibility of this because based upon what came before planning was just a piece, a piece of land. I'm not sure, was there a building on that land or just a piece of parcel of land that was subdivided? There was no buildings or anything at the time, correct?
At the time of the, the application of the plan, or just a?
Just a piece of land.
Piece of land.
That land sold. Now, two attorneys, I, I've, I've bought a couple houses in my time, when I go to my, when I go to my closing, I make sure everything is dotted, my eyes are dotted, my t's are crossed, and then I sign off. We, I, I know there's, there's much paperwork usually in a closing, but again, I think it's between both parties and not the town. That's, that's all I'm saying.
You have to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Mathieu Moye, 132 Rollingwood Drive, North Kings, Rhode Island. I am close friends of John and Derek, been friends with them since, since I can't remember. I am a licensed landscape architect, so I do have some familiarity with reading plans like this. They asked me to review it on their behalf. And I think one thing that just caught my ear is when a solicitor here said that an easement is granted from, that Mr. Noon's or a Foren, he owned the entire parcel, but as I reviewed the documents, the right of way goes from Industrial Lane, which is a town road, to a parcel in the back there. So technically, there is, it's not Mr. Noon's going from parcel A of Mr. Noon's to parcel B of Mr. Noon's, it's going from Industrial Lane to parcel D, and the Reeds wanted to have the assumption that it was also going to their parcel as well. I could be mistaken if, okay, so if you could elaborate on that, please.
The parcel that was owned by Mr. Noon's in the back, let's call it parcel B, the land went like this, came out, and then a piece of that land came down like this. It was just one great big parcel, and a strip of that land came down and went to, to Industrial Lane. It was the same way as if he had built the house back there and put a driveway over there. It was the one parcel. That strip we're talking about, as Noon's Lane, was never cut off from the big piece in the back. It was one solid piece of land with the big piece in the back.
And I, I also find it insulting to the constituents in the town that, from what I have been informed, that there are members of this board that have a family relationship with Mr. Noon's and have refused to recuse themselves.
And I'm, I'm not, I recuse myself. This claim is against the, no, hold on. This claim is against the planning board, so I represent the planning board. Whatever, whatever goes on between Mr. Reed and Mr. Noon's, I would say Mr. Noon's is my third cousin, okay? I recuse myself usually from everything. I'm not even here discussing Mr. Noon's. I'm discussing the planning board. And the planning board represents the town. This has nothing to do with the matter. The town is not responsible. If Mr. Reed suits Mr. Noon's, that's none of my business.
I agree with you.
This, my business is the planning board, plain and simple.
But I just think it's more appropriate in a cleaner way for representatives of the town when there is a potential conflict of interest.
Sir, sir, this shouldn't even be before the town council. Well, this is, but the bottom, the bottom line is, you're asking, this is what was asked.
I didn't ask.
The town council to revoke the illegal administrative subdivision.
Correct.
The town council does not have that power under charter, statute, rule, or regulation. Even if the Reeds are completely, 100% right, completely, everything they told you is factual. This town council cannot overturn the planning board.
And I'm not saying you can or you cannot, sir. I'm just saying that, so, I come from of a mindset of that there should be no ambiguity in any decision.
Sir, it shouldn't even be before the town council tonight. The claim was denied because the town council doesn't have the power to give the relief that the Reeds want.
Understood.
Period.
But the denial was posted online.
The denial was posted in error because it's always been done like that. It's a typo. The fact, the fact of the matter is, you're debating it right now, correct? There's five people that are going to vote on it.
I understand that, and you haven't voted yet.
If it gets overturned, it gets overturned. It was a recommendation of a denial.
I just think it would have been more appropriate, sir, to say it was a recommendation. When you posted on your town.
I did say that at the very beginning of this conversation. It was a recommendation.
I haven't talked over you. Please don't talk over me.
I'm simply saying that if you, I went to the town of West Warwick's website. I clicked on tonight's agenda. I clicked on their claims, and it says there, council denial. I don't have the entire thing there. To me, it would have been simpler, when there's a pending potential litigation that could happen here, to just say that this is a recommendation to the, to the council members to deny. Then it's the five of you's job to say, you know what? I agree with you, council, council. We go forward. You make your decision. The Reeds then take their action in Superior Court if necessary. That's all I'm suggesting. I just think that it's, it's a little gray, and there's a, is a very easy way to have solved this by being a little bit more upfront, which is, I think, what Mr. Councilman Padula was hinting at in his earlier questioning. That's all I have to say. I have no hard feelings towards anyone. I appreciate you hearing my thoughts. Thank you.
David, I'd like to be heard because yesterday I received a phone call saying that they had heard the rumor that I was related to Mr. Noon's. I don't even know Mr. Noon's. And when I denied it, they said, well, is your wife related? On the record, I am not related, and I do not know Mr. Noon's, and neither does my wife.
And on the record, he is my third cousin. And on the record, I'm not here discussing Mr. Noon's. I'm here discussing the planning board because that's what the claim is about. That's my record. Any other comment?
Gentlemen, Tom Oates from Colonial Way. I have a, just one quick question on this. I'm looking here at an official West Warwick seal. On this page, it's Main Street Maps, Town of West Warwick, Rhode Island, Web GSP, official site for the town of West Warwick. It lists Clyde Street, Main Street, Industrial Lane, Garrett Lane, and Noon's Lane as town roads.
Is that Google Maps because?
No, it's a, it's a West Warwick site.
This is what the plat is right now.
Okay.
Industrial Lane, Clyde Street. Those other streets aren't even on here. If you go upstairs, that's what you're going to find.
Yeah, but this is.
Well, the point I'm trying to make, Tommy, is you go to 18 different of those sites, you're going to have 18 different maps. The town has no control of what they're putting on their maps. Do you understand that?
Yeah, but this has, this is posed with the West Warwick town, the West Warwick town seal, Town of West Warwick. It, it's all, it's, why would it have the official town seal on it?
This is what you have upstairs.
Do you want to answer that?
I understand.
It does not indicate that that's a town road.
This site here?
Those are words, yeah. I'll, I'll show you.
Do you see this, this here Industrial Lane? See how there are two lines on the side of it?
Right.
That indicates it's a town road. See Clyde Street?
Yeah.
The two lines indicates a town road. Industrial Lane, you know, the two lines indicates a town road. There are no lines associated with either one of these.
That indicates paving from what I see on this. It doesn't.
It does not indicate paving. It, it indicates a right-of-way. It's been dedicated and accepted to the town, by the town. So if you look out here, you may see other areas where you have lines like that, that if you put on, you know, the Google Earth will be grass because that's a paper street. These right here, why they're on here, I don't know. They probably shouldn't be on there. But that does not indicate there's a road. See this line here? As that's indicated here?
Yeah.
That is a lot, okay? That's probably the building number 43, but that's a lot.
Right.
There's no indication of a road, so-called Garrett Lane, only to that lot. And this is a lot. There's no indication of a road, so-called Noon's Lane, only to that lot. This is the, if you move this over, you can see the full outline of that lot.
Right. Yeah, I, I.
You see the full outline of the lot?
Yes, I know the lot goes all the way to the roof.
The lot goes all the way here. It wraps around. It wraps around this way. It goes all the way down. So that Noon's Lane, a word on the map, that does not indicate a road.
The disheartening part is that the town seal on this page.
I understand that. I understand that, but that's not an official map.
You, you have to come to the town to get the official maps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
John Reed, 62 Andrews Avenue, West Warwick. I'm not going to get into the issue about the thing with the property. First of all, it was never requested as a public right-of-way. That'll be adjudicated. I got an issue with your open meetings laws, okay? A serious one. There was a claims meeting last month, was there not?
Yeah.
Was it having to do with Noon's Lane?
Had to do with the planning board.
My lawsuit?
Your claim right here tonight had to do with the planning board, yes.
That was, when? Last month?
Last month. We haven't met since.
A town error shows it as being denied. A town error. Is also a town error that the demand is on the website? When the town council is fully aware that there's another party involved in this? Is that an error?
Say that again.
If you pull this up, you get the decision that has your name on it from a month ago, okay? Town error. And the complaint.
What decision, what decision do you have?
There's been no decision made.
No?
The decision's made here tonight, Mr. Reed.
No, not that. But where did this come from? Where'd that come from? That's just waiting for your signature. It doesn't say deny or approve.
Well, every, everything on the agenda, you look at every item on the agenda, it says town council president approves.
Where are you supposed to check off for approve, Mr. Goslin?
If it got denied, it could.
Who denied it?
If it gets, if this gets approved tonight as a denial.
That gets amended.
This gets amended. If it gets approved as an approval, not to deny it.
So you already took the time yourself to figure that the town council is going to deny it?
No.
No.
Well, then where's it of deny and approve? There should be two.
Mr. Reed, if they all vote no, not to deny it, then I will not sign that paper. That paper will not come before me to be signed.
This paper says what on it? Deny.
But again, the council can vote yes or no to deny it.
And it's a paper order.
And it's not signed.
All right, let's go back to the supplemental.
No, I can't get up and talk. I'm his wife, Donna Reed. I'd just like to know why you put a whole, whole lawsuit for everybody to see on the town page.
It's the claim. I didn't put it on there.
Who put it on there?
It goes on, the claim came before us. All claims go on. They scan it.
Once it's submitted, it's public record.
Yeah, once it's submitted, it's a public record.
But it has nothing to do with you. You said you can't deny it, or so why are you?
Just because, just because it was submitted erroneously or not, it still came before the claims committee. The claims committee denied it.
I just, I don't understand. This is a town council. We're supposedly intelligent people, okay? My husband paid $80,000 for a piece of land.
I understand.
From this person right here that told him he could put a building, was going to help him put that building up, and then got his money and told, no, you don't have a right-of-way.
But ma'am, he has a right, he has a right to adjudicate that matter in Superior Court.
All right, let's go back to this. When we discussed this before, Mr. Williamson, you told the town council this couldn't be discussed because it was under litigation. Is that true?
I've told the town council many times, many things, that they don't choose to follow my advice.
Does that mean that the town council or whoever can publish this claim?
That was published, John, because you submitted it through a attorney through the claims. Once it gets received by the.
Who was it addressed to? Who was it addressed to?
Town council.
Does it have a town, does it have a clerk's stamp on it?
Anything goes to the town council goes to the clerk's office, to the council.
Does it get stamped?
Stamped as far as what? Time received? That's the clerk.
Does it? Every legal document that comes through, it needs a town stamp?
Most get stamped.
All the ones I saw are stamped, except mine.
Correspondence? Something about correspondence.
Oh, correspondence, not as a role.
No, he's talking about the claim.
Yeah, it's the correspondence.
He talks about the claim of July 21st. The envelope might get stamped.
When I looked at some other ones, they've all got town stamps on them.
Mr. Reed, hold on one second. If you delivered the paper yourself, hand-delivered it, the paper would get stamped. If you delivered it in envelope, which I have one here, the envelope gets stamped.
Well, there's an envelope that goes with this somewhere, then?
But John, John, the procedure, the clerk receives it on behalf of the town council. It wasn't mailed each town council member individually, correct?
But it was supposed to go to the town council.
But John, John, the town clerk handles the correspondence for the town council.
Is this correspondence supposed to go to the town council?
This is mailed to 117 Main Street, correct?
And it's before the council tonight?
Can I ask you individually? Have you seen this before tonight? Have you seen this before tonight? Have you? Have you?
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
You making a decision on something you've never saw?
Wasn't that sent out on Friday with part of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So it was sent out Friday.
Thursday.
John, John, you want to litigate this in court?
I don't want to litigate this. I'm talking about open meeting law, okay?
What open meeting law violation are you talking about?
First of all. The claims meeting?
Yes.
Is that a town claims meeting?
Mary Ann, was that properly posted, the claims meeting, last time the council met?
Yes.
Okay. It was posted 48 hours. It was put on the Secretary of State's site. It's a legal meeting.
It's a legal meeting. There are no minutes. But you have a clerk in attendance. What is the clerk doing? Voting?
Maybe, maybe, maybe the clerk hasn't done the meeting minutes yet, John.
No, no, no. Excuse me. Mr. Goslin, secretary of.
I, I, I'll be honest with you. The way all claims meetings have taken place in the 12 years I've been here, and I think many years before that, is the town council president, the attorney, the solicitor, and all others involved, meeting, meet in the air, bring it, whether or not we say this should be a denial, the department head, Dave, I'll use Dave Lynn By for example, because he does most of the claims. If a pothole happens in Warwick, and yet they're saying it's West Warwick, New London Ave is a perfect example. That then is told to Mary Ann, put on next agenda as a denial, recommendation for denial. If we say approve, those, those items go on the approved side, the denial side, and then it's brought to the council for discussion. There's never been any minutes ever taken.
Have you ever bothered to read the statute on open meetings laws?
Yes, Mr. Reed, I know the open meetings. If you want to go file the complaint, please. I mean.
There's 20 of them. By the way, I got to.
There probably is. It's just more attorney fees.
Can I speak?
Yes.
The advice the attorney gave me last meeting was the best advice I ever had. Going to Attorney General's office. Not like it states in minutes that I ask for an appeal from the planning board, which I never asked for an appeal. I got nothing to appeal from the planning board. But when I went to Attorney General's office, they recommended I go to the state police, which from there, you know where they're going back to. So that was some very good free advice. Going back to these laws, you don't care, okay?
I'm not saying I don't care, Mr. Reed.
Did you say you read this? You understand what?
I understand open meetings laws. I am telling you, then, then I can tell you right now, he's violated it, I violated it, every council president before me has violated.
What's that say?
I understand it, Mr. Reed. I've.
Can you read that, please?
No, I don't want to read it right now.
Can I read it?
No.
John, it's the town council meeting. You want to litigate this matter, file a lawsuit. You've been promising us the two months you were going to file a lawsuit. That hasn't happened yet. How come?
First of all, you didn't bother getting in touch with my attorney.
Oh, yes, I did. Several times, as a matter of fact.
Information from him says you have.
Oh, okay.
I'll supply you with that correspondence.
I can supply you with the same correspondence where I did contact him. All right, now, just because we haven't met doesn't mean we haven't been in contact.
He says you haven't been in contact.
Oh, so what am I supposed to do?
He was supposed to go to their office.
And I'm going to call him and tell him that I agree with him.
Show.
Right, because he wants me to agree with him.
So be filed. That's between you and him.
Exactly.
I'm not here to litigate that. I'm not worried about that.
All right, so.
First of all, errors, errors. Somebody's got to pay for errors.
Then file the appropriate claim.
It's just the people, the constituents in this room need to know what a Mickey Mouse operation. Oh, mistakes, oh, mistakes. If I get a mistake, I got to pay for it.
John, put your complaint in writing.
I intend to, but don't these people own up to it? The law is there.
Put your complaint in writing.
It's supposed to have minutes. The claims meeting is supposed to have minutes. He puts it in an email, black and white. We don't take no minutes. He's the president of the town council.
I'm not going to lie to you, John.
And what are you doing here? If you don't know how to run it?
John.
Excuse me, I'm done. This is John.
Maybe I was wrong, but I can tell you it's never been done.
Okay? And just in case anybody, I saved you some time, okay? I made five copies fall. You may want to read some of the highlighted laws that you seem to know that pertain to constituents and voted you here, and you don't know what you don't.
John, you came before us in April. Wait a minute, John, Mr. Reed. You came, Mr. Reed, let me speak. You came to here, you came before this council, you told me point-blank, you told this entire council, you have no access to your property.
Which I don't.
Wait a minute. I drive down to your property, down on Industrial Lane, and say, wait a minute, the entire property is on Industrial Lane. How can you not enter? You've got to remove curves. Okay. Then you met with me, you told me Mr. Butteau, you've, you've met with Mr. Butteau and said all this wrongdoing's going on.
Do you want to talk about something you don't know about?
Mr. Reed, I'm only talking about your claim and your claims for the last four months.
Have you seen the exhibits that go with the claim?
The deed has nothing to do with us.
I'm not asking about the deed.
I'm going by the paperwork that your lawyer sent to the town.
I came here because I went to the planning board. The planning board guy says to me, the president, there's nothing I can do for you. I'm not the police. Very professional answer from the town.
And you told me that also.
Okay? It's on tape. Very professional. So where do I go? DPW, or am I able to see a fire chief? No. The law says I come to the council for procedures that the town planning board didn't follow. You can't overturn their rules. I know that. I didn't just come off the turn-up truck. But you have control of their procedures. And when I tell you that the planning board president said, there's nothing I can do, well, then the town council says, well, there's nothing I can do either, because we don't control them. Well, you don't control the procedural issues? You don't? Maybe you got to solve this, Mr. Williams.
John, what authority are you referring to? Would they control the procedures of the planning board?
You appointed them. You appointed them.
Period.
And then after that, what? They run their own?
They follow the laws and regulations of the planning board.
You have, you have the right to.
Mr. DiFiore has got his own headaches coming.
Well, he's the planning board attorney, just like he's us or this.
We've gone through that. We go around, sir. He's, he's testifying that I'm looking for public access.
But, Mr. Reed, you're asking what they have. They have an attorney that represents them at every planning board.
And he says the same thing. It's a civil matter. You don't want to hear it. And that's exactly what he told you when you had the meeting in there. And he sent the email to him.
John, the town council under the charter can inquire into any department, office, board, commission, or other agency excluding the school department, but not interfere with their normal administrative functions.
Normal administrative functions.
That's the law.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that 100%.
You just asked them to change the policies of the planning board.
Then how's it change the policy?
So what are you asking the town council?
If you go to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, and we're talking about plans. Plans and planning board, that they kind of go together, that are in that office, that are falsely put there. There's references on deeds that are looking, that refer to plans in that office, that are not there. Plans, planning board? I'm not asking anybody to change my deed. The planning board can't do that. You can't do that. He can't do that. But he, so far, has been the only honest one I can find, okay? His very first thing was, that is not what he approved, that is not what he recommended. Coming from the planner in an email, brings it to the planning board. I don't know what you're talking about. He's talking about it right-of-way. They got all the access in the world. Well, he approved an administrative subdivision that shrunk it down to 10 feet.
No, the, the right-of-way is still on the administrative subdivision at 40 feet.
No, check the property lines. It's 10 feet. The property lines were moved.
The property line is not the right-of-way, sir. I can show you the right-of-way.
It says 40-foot egress, and then it shows the property line moving.
Property line's irrelevant.
Well, then I guess the engineer doesn't know what he's talking about either. But we got a whole town of people don't know what they're talking about. It's amazing we even stand there. What does that say? It looks like the business says 40-foot. I mean, but we're going here. They moved the property lines. It's showing the property line being moved. That says 40 feet. It also says right-of-way. It says 40-foot wide, egress, easement for this property. It's 40 feet wide. But that's showing there, 40 feet.
It says forty foot wide egress easement for this property. It's forty feet wide. But that's shown there, forty feet.
I've spoken to you as being a truthful guy. I sat in your office, and you said that easement was a dime for that lot, and that's what you approved.
No, that's not quite correct.
Yeah, but I don't want to litigate this here. I'm talking about open, public meetings, which you all admitted are not carried forward truthfully at all. And you had a claims meeting. What other claims did you meet besides mine?
It was a motor vehicle and an insurance claim.
How come they're not on the docket with, with mine?
Because they didn't have to come to pork claims, because they have to go before the, um, trust, because one was an injury claim. That goes to the trust, which is our insurance company.
The prison meeting didn't say this. You have it?
No.
You don't have it? Well, we'll, we'll, we'll fuck, carry us down the road.
Thank you.
Mr. Williamson, thank you again for your...
Not anytime.
Jared, would you like to speak?
Thank you, councilman. Jared Nunes, fifty-two Philip Street, Coventry. I'm not going to belabor this. I know this has been a pretty contentious meeting up to this point. All that I want to say is that I, I personally take offense at the fact that anybody is insinuating that anything underhanded happened during this transaction between two business entities. All right, I'm a partner. The entity that owns this property is Four N Properties, of which I am a one-fourth share partner, okay? This land transaction was the product of months of negotiation between myself, my father, my brother, and Mr. Reed, of which, during which that point, he postponed the closing at least once to do his due diligence on the property, okay? And the only thing I can assure the council and anybody else who's listening here or watching is that... The only thing I can assure everybody is that the piece of property that Mr. Reed purchased is exactly as drawn and negotiated, in which he closed on, all right, with his, with the benefit of a closing attorney, all right, and is exactly what he purchased. I have a plan of a building that he presented to me and said, I want to, I actually subdivided this piece of property for him. He said, I want to fit this building on it. It was a forty by sixty, two-bay garage with an office in the front and two doors in the back, okay? I subdivided this piece of property exactly as Mr. Reed asked for, exactly to the dimensions that he asked for to fit this building. I sent him a proposal for me to construct this building for him.
Including the land.
Okay, including the land, with the price of the land was included, okay? And it was subdivided exactly as he asked for, and there was nothing underhanded here. He, I never promised him access through my property to get to his. That is akin to you selling your house and, you know, the person who buys it saying, well, I should have access through your neighbor's property to get to your house as part of this transaction. It makes no sense, and that, that was never part of the deal. They didn't come until months after the closing and said, well, we, we want to change the configuration of our building, and now we need access through this thing. And mind you, one thing that I want to point out is that Mr. Reed has never contacted me since this. I had one correspondence from his attorney to my attorney saying, we, we want a corrective deed because we believe this was an error. We responded that, no, it was not an error. This is exactly how it was negotiated, okay? So he has never reached out to me once to, to, to talk to me about this. Mr. Padula, hold on one second, please. I want to make this clear. If he had reached out to me, and to this day, all right, I, I, prior to this even happening, I consider them friends, all right, I would buy the piece of property back from them. I have no, I have no bad blood here, none at all. If he is that unhappy with what I sold him, I'll buy it back. I don't, I'm not trying to pull a fast one on anybody, but I'm not going to get rigged through the coals here because he's trying to get something that he didn't purchase in the first place.
You want to buy it back and put some...
Mr. Reed?
So if anybody has any questions, I'll answer. Anybody's, I'm here, I'm not hiding from anything. There was nothing underhanded that happened here. If you want to sell the property back, I'll buy it back.
Yeah, what you want.
All right, I'll buy it back. So...
Jared, I, listen, I understand what you're saying. I understand what they're saying. I'm not a judge, jury, and executioner. That's in court. I don't have a problem...
I get it.
Whether you win or lose, believe me. I wish us both the luck in the world. You're both my friends. What I'm concerned about is certain things that happened in the town.
If, if that's a claim that he has with the town, that's, that's outside, and if he has...
We have nothing to do with what's legal, what you stole him, what he sold you, whatever you've told him, that's for your lawyer and his lawyer to decide who's right and wrong.
The only reason I get up here is because the insinuation was made that I...
I never insinuated that you stuck Mr. Reed. I never insinuated that he was lying or telling the truth. I don't care. That's not my beef. My beef is certain things that were done on this by, on the town, I'm not happy with. Nothing to do with you two guys, because I'm wondering what other people made mistakes with their filings or something else.
Councilman, I've heard everything from, there's no frontage to...
I, I don't care about that.
Town employees changed the deeds to this happened and that happened, all right? The deed that is recorded in this town hall is the same deed that Mr. Reed signed in the presence of his attorney at the time of closing. Nothing changed from there. It's the exact piece of property that he approved the purchase of. So, and his attorney recorded it.
No, yours did. Check it again. Yours did.
All right, we're, we're way off the agenda now. You guys said your piece. Again, this is for the denial. This is, if you vote yes, you're voting yes to deny the claim against the pension, for us to overturn the pension board's ruling. The planning board, not the pension. So much going on. The planning board's approval. The council's going to vote. Again, this is a claim against the planning board. If you want me to recuse myself, I will.
Just so everyone's clear.
And I'll recuse myself, then.
This, this claim is to demand that the town council revoke the illegal administrup, excuse me, administrative subdivision recorded on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. There's been absolutely no evidence presented on either half, whether it's an illegal subdivision or not. But more importantly, this town council does not have the power to revoke what the planning board did, period.
Okay, guys, we're going to take a roll call vote.
Yes, agrees with this decision. Correct.
You're either going to say yes to denying the claim?
First, there's going to be a motion.
All right.
There's already motion. This is a discussion.
Motion was made.
Okay, Councilman Padula?
I'm going to abstain from voting.
Councilman Lachaty?
Quick question. Can I ask a question? If, if we're not able to overturn anything the planning board does, right or wrong?
That's why. Why vote?
Then why are we voting?
Well, if you, the, the issue was that it never should have been...
Why are we even doing it?
Excuse me.
That's a, that's a very good question, because again, between Mr. DeFure and myself, we indicated that it wasn't properly before the town council a month and a half ago. But everybody wanted to go forward, because that's what social media has been doing to this town. So now it's before you guys, all right? There's a recommendation that it be denied. Mr. Padula has abstained. Mr. Goslin has recused himself to. There's the three of you left.
I, I'm not going to vote if we, I'm not going to vote. If we, we don't need to vote, nothing's going to come of this, yes or no, then there's really no point in it.
That gives the Reeds the direction on which way they can go from here.
It's a civil matter, though, correct?
No, it's not, because as long as you guys don't vote on this, it's going to lay pending as a claim. So if you wanted to continue as a claim, incurring attorney's expenses, let it go. But it's before you tonight either to approve or deny.
I, I guess I'm going to uphold what the planning board said, then.
So you're, you're...
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
And I am going to vote to deny it based on the information that was provided by the planner, by the solicitor. So the resolution, is it a resolution?
No.
The claim is denied.
And now they can proceed forward, correct?
Right.
Either way, they can proceed forward.
They have never been, not able to proceed forward in a superior court regarding this issue.
Resignation of municipal court judge resolved that the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation of Jonas Bernero Jr. of the municipal, as the municipal court judge for the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion? Uh, John has worked with Angel and I the longest. Um, John is actually retiring and going to go part-time at his, uh, local firm, and he'll be spending his winters in Florida, so, uh, he, he called me and told me that this is what his plans are, and, uh, by the end of December, he'll be resigning. So we'll be looking for a new municipal court judge. And he has definitely been a very fair judge. He's always done a good job. I've attended some of his court sessions, not because I wanted to, not really because I wanted to. But, um, he's always been very professional, never had any complaints about the judge, and, uh, you know, thank him for his service for all the years he's done, done this far. It's twenty years?
Going on. I want to just reiterate what David said. John's been a lifelong friend and a neighbor in the native section all my life. Both families have been very friendly. Johnny did a great job as a judge and our moderator temporarily, he said, and he owned that for, what, five, six years. But I want to wish John and his family good luck, and I thank him for his service.
Any other comment? Hearing none?
David?
Yeah, sorry.
I go back to being assistant solicitor under John's father as the solicitor, known John since then. This council's losing a great municipal judge. They took fifty-some years of practice. They don't come any better than John.
Just on behalf of the police department, same sentiments. I mean, the municipal court has always run nothing but smoothly. Judge Bernero is a true character of that. His leadership has provided us with years of service that he provided to the police department as well. We thank him for that.
Thank you. Vote in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We should all vote it down and then let him...
Oh, God. He's going to have one vote down anyway.
Resignation of town prosecutor resolved that the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation of J. Patrick O'Neill Esquire as the town prosecutor for the town of West Warwick with an effective date of September fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second, any discussion? Again, Patty O'Neill, um, not one-hundred percent sure why he's resigning, but, um...
Made judge.
He, he has not been made judge yet, but I think he's been appointed, will be appointed. So he just wanted to give us a heads up, and, uh, so at that point, if we accept this, we need to consider that we have court dates and everything else scheduled. We've got to find out the game plan for a town prosecutor, and the police department is going to probably want to know that right away. So we need to get together on that one ASAP. Um, and again, Patrick O'Neill.
He says he won't be able to attend the meeting next week either, correct, Angela?
You know, I was here in two thousand and six. His appointment was controversial, and Councilman Padula and I were definitely, uh, two that weren't supportive at the time, and, uh, but he proved us wrong. He did a good job as a prosecutor, uh, attorney, so...
No, he didn't prove us wrong. It's just that they fired a prosecutor with a ninety-four percent conviction rate and a week before Christmas. So that's why I was opposed to it.
All right. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resignation of the sewer use tax board review resolved that the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation from Lee Rice of the sewer use tax board of review for the town of West Warwick, her husband's.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second, any discussion?
Yeah, Lee did a good job. She's been on that board for quite a few years, and I'm chairman of the, of the sewer subcommittee, and Bernie can attest to it. Uh, we have a good crew on there for the, uh, committee, and we'd be sorry to see her go. Yeah, because of illness.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointment for Board of Tenant Affairs resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Board of Tenant Affairs for the town of West Warwick with the term to expire April two, twenty twenty.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second, discussion? Uh, Mr. Machado is actually a constituent of mine. He lives at Clyde Tower. He's, he's very, uh, vocal and very, uh, he's an advocate for the residents there, um, and he's been, he's been actually battling some illness, and he's still attending the meetings and still making sure he can speak on behalf. He has a decent working relationship with the housing authority, and he brings all matters to them, so I highly recommend Mr. Machado.
Yeah, I second that. I'll second Joe's name.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
An ordinance amending Appendix C traffic ordinance of the Code of Ordinance of the town of West Warwick, ordinance number two thousand and seventeen dash twenty-two.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion now?
There's presently a stop sign located on Hutter Street at the intersection of Vincenzo Drive. It's recommended that that stop sign come down and that Appendix C be changed to show the removal of the stop sign.
That was the mistake. They did the wrong street, wrong intersection, so...
Any other comment? Roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jay? Jason? John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number two thousand and seventeen dash twenty-four, ordinance authorizing the town manager to implement a fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget corrective action plan intended to prevent the occurrence of a deficit.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Mark?
Town council members, as you're aware, um, in reviewing the fiscal year seventeen budget, it was, uh, discovered that the town was, uh, running behind on revenues and a little over on expenses, and, uh, we had determined that there would be a deficit at the close of the fiscal year if we did not take action to resolve the deficit. At the time that, uh, we were looking at the deficit, uh, it was approximately one point four million. Uh, since that time, with additional revenues coming in, and reviewing the expenses and some encumbered purchases that were not followed through on, as we meet this evening, that deficit is now down to one point two million. Uh, as you can see in this corrective action plan, uh, we have identified sources, revenue sources intended to resolve the deficit. Those include, uh, capital reallocation, uh, an OPEB trust fund transfer, that's other post-employment benefits, unassigned fund balance, and OPEB pre-funding contribution. That is a contribution that the town included in the budget. Uh, the town made half of the contribution earlier in the year and has not made the second half of that contribution. There's no requirement to make that contribution. So those, um, items in total equal one point six million. So we've included under the OPEB trust transfer in the unassigned fund balance numbers not to exceed. When we go back and look at the budget, we're, we're hoping that, um, the deficit will be slightly lower than it is. However, we'll be using, um, the full capital reallocation of two eighty-five, one oh-two, and the full OPEB pre-funding contribution of three seventy-one, seven thirty-eight. And the variance will take place on the OPEB fund transfer, not to exceed five hundred thousand, and access of the unassigned fund balance not to exceed four hundred and fifty-three, four ninety-four.
Any questions for Mark on this matter?
Yeah, I mean...
Go ahead.
Are you going to split those evenly?
It hasn't been determined. Really, uh, we need to look at what the overall, um, allocations will be. We'll have to look at the amount of money at this point. There, I believe, is one point seven million available in the OPEB, uh, trust fund. So that's to be determined depending on the, the, the ultimate, uh, deficit. We're hoping to retain as much of the unassigned fund balance, the rainy day fund or whatever we refer that to, as possible. So there, there's probably going to be a split between the OPEB and the unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
People who don't know, uh, I brought this up. Everybody kept criticizing me for being against the five-year plan. It's my turn. Unfortunately, I'm going to pay dearly because of the properties I own and the different trusts and different LLCs. It's thousands of dollars that I'm going to lose, but I'm going to be honest with each and every one of you. We went through almost four million dollars in our rainy day fund. We went through last year's deficit of one point two million, this year's deficit of one point four million. We're not even talking about next year. That's seven million dollars for... And every time I asked, and most of you were here, and the Times was here every time, I said, how are we doing with the five-year plan? We got a surplus. We're fine. We're doing better than expected. I want to know who okayed whoever took out our rainy day fund money without council approval, number one. Who gave them permission to move that four million dollars and cover up the deficit? Maybe once in a while, we're coun... Maybe once in a while with council approval, we covered a two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollar deficit. Never four million. That can never, ever be replaced. And I'm gonna do another thing that's disturbing to me. We have three million dollars in an enterprise fund, the sewer enterprise fund. Every time I ask the manager, "This belongs in a sewer department account." "No, no." And it was all excuses. Bernie, I asked Bernie to be here, the superintendent of it. What we're doing, I asked the manager, that three million dollars is surrounding communities' money. If there's ever a trap, anything, a break, a major break, anything that happens could cost us millions of dollars. That's what that money is put aside for. I asked the acting town manager where the money is, and they're using it for daily operations. My hat goes off to the manager for going and looking at everything that I requested and a lot of other people requested, and he's been right on the money, but we got our hands full. So, whoever bought that five-year plan and the fourteen percent in taxes we already paid is out the door, out the window. And they're gonna say, "We gave nine million dollars every year to the pension fund." "Yeah, but they ain't telling you we're spending nine point five." Everything is unsustainable. It's not a haircut no more. It's gonna be a beheading, and the taxpayers are on the hook and the employees.
I have a question on... Angelo just brought up a point. It's not on here. And I know we all sat and talked with the manager. Not together, we all sat in different meetings.
Thank you for clarifying.
But he just mentioned the sewer fund, and I know that's something we touched upon. There was... What's left of that three million?
Let me clarify something first. I just wanna talk about what Angelo said, and I agree with majority of what he said. But when he says two hundred thousand... So, when he says seven million went down to twos. In two thousand twelve, June thirtieth, the auditors came in, okay? It was four point six million dollars in the rainy day fund. If everybody remembers two thousand twelve, that was the cruelo action to save five percent, cut five percent from the schools. Everybody rallied to school. In our rainy day fund, we were putting that five percent into our rainy day fund because that was designated money, okay? So, at the end of two thousand twelve, June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, there wasn't seven million dollars in the rainy day fund.
Nobody said there ever was. There was three point six.
Angelo, wait a minute, but I'm going back. You're saying five-year plan. The five-year plan didn't come in till the end of fourteen and fifteen. Two thousand twelve, okay? It was four point six. Two thousand thirteen, four point five. Fred inherited Mike Stanford's budget in two thousand fourteen, okay? Stanford created that budget. Ended up with a shortfall where three point six million. And here, as a council, I have all thirteen resolutions. The council approved one point one million dollars out of the rainy day fund to go to handicap fishing pier, seventy-five thousand, civic center fire upgrades, four hundred thousand, labor specialist, seventy-five thousand, unbudgeted salaries, sixteen thousand, DPW truck, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred, labor arbitration, six thousand, centennial committee, ten thousand, actuarial services, thirty-five thousand, pension postage, ten thousand, negotiation expenses, thirty thousand, police cell block repairs, twenty-two thousand, civic center roofs, two hundred thousand, St. Germain track, twenty thousand. So, we approved a million. So, now we're down to two point five million.
Previous council, correct?
Right, previous council. Now, over the years, there's been other expenditures that, no fault of yours, Jay. The seventy-five thousand dollar handicap fishing pier was closer to a half a million dollars, okay? The first councilman who introduced that told us it was gonna cost us seventy-five thousand. It ended up being five hundred thousand. No fault of yours, okay? No fault of anybody's, not even that council person, because that was brought to us as a fishing pier, seventy-five thousand dollars. They hit ledge, they hit... The town manager sat here and said, "We need eighty more thousand dollars for special piers." That wasn't a budget item. Now, whether or not it should be in here, it probably should have been in here because we authorized myself, Angelo, Councilman Giroux...
Most of them were grants.
The eighty thousand was not a grant.
We come up with eighty.
The eighty thousand came out of our pocket.
Yep.
Okay? There are other things that happened throughout the last two years. We took back the civic center, almost a half a million dollars to get that back up to par. A Zamboni and all the electrical work, get the ice rink back up and running and functioning.
How many hundreds of thousands do we have from the rent that we put aside?
Angelo, that all went when we did the boards.
It was put into the civic center? So, it didn't cost us five hundred thousand?
Angelo, after we took it over, the boards were already in.
Yeah.
It did cost us five hundred, almost five hundred. Sixty was a Zamboni. The rest was inspections, and there's been a lot of over expenditures. This year, let's talk about this year's over expenditures. Two of them, one was fire overtime, which was over three hundred thousand. Severance payments, which is very rarely in the budget because you don't know who's retiring. So, when, let's just say Chief Silver retires and gets a seventy thousand dollar check with all his sick time and all that, that's not in the budget. Those are surprise items. No.
Listen, I agree with...
Truck frame, wait a minute. Fire truck frame repairs, two hundred thousand dollars was not in last year's budget. Who knew the fire station needed... It's not two hundred, it's a little less than that, but... That wasn't in the budget for fire truck frame repairs. You know, so, I understand, like, I read the article, I read your article, I understand your frustration. There's about one point seven to two million dollars that wasn't authorized by the council. I totally agree with you, and they're both on shortfalls of eight hundred thousand on each side.
Three point six million, right from the town manager. Three point six million with, before the five-year plan. Five-year plan come effect, one point two million, one point four million. They sat right here. What's this deficit? Oh, no, it's only on paper. This is all covered. We have this covered, that covered, to the two and a seven million dollars.
Realistically, if you wanna say that, there's actually non-spendable, in June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, non-spendable, two hundred and five thousand dollars in the rainy day fund. Committed money, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand. Mark, what was that committed money? Nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
It's capital.
And then, unassigned, four hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, your rainy day fund, if you wanna say, 'cause committed and non-spendable, and that's what, and when you're saying all that throughout the years, that three million, six, three point six million also included non-spendable, restricted, and that's what I'm trying to say. Right now, there's one point six million dollars in that rainy day fund.
No, there's not. There's less than four hundred thousand dollars, Mark. What's in the rainy day fund?
I'm going by the paperwork the town manager handed.
I don't care. Throw that paperwork away.
There's, in the unassigned fund balance, there's four hundred and fifty-three, four ninety-four.
But, so what's the committed and non-spendable?
The committed...
That's what I'm adding up, Angelo, the committed and non-spendable.
Yeah, just like we got all the people breaking the doors down to come in for growth. We got all that growth too.
Mark?
I'm not sure that that committed number is...
Is that accurate, John? Nine ninety-four?
Nine ninety-four, three sixty-one, as of June thirtieth. But what you've got there is that that's a committed amount of money. That is not the unassigned fund balance. So, the, you know, the, if you wanna compare apples to apples, the unassigned fund balance in two thousand fourteen was three point four, and today it's four fifty-three.
Thank you.
The, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, the overall fund balance was three point six. Today, the overall fund balance is one point six. That includes the committed. So, there were deficits in two thousand fifteen...
Nobody's denying that.
Of nine fifty-four, in two thousand sixteen, of a million fifty-two thousand.
I'm just trying to clarify. Everybody keeps thinking it happened since two thousand fourteen.
Of course it did.
Angelo, it started in two thousand twelve.
We had the money in the rainy day fund. We never touched it. No wonder why everybody looked at me when I had three eyes. I said, "Let's get six hundred thousand instead of paying juice on it. Let's use our own money. It's only sitting in a fund."
Then there's this.
In two thousand and twelve, you had that money in. You weren't using the sewer enterprise fund, and we weren't two point seven million dollars in the hole.
Angelo, how long had, and this is a question nobody seems to be able to answer. Bernie, I don't think you can answer it. I don't think, I don't know if you could answer it. Who, in all these years, authorized the sewer money to be part of the everyday finances in this town?
It wasn't supposed to have been.
When? It's been going on for the whole twelve years I've been here.
It wasn't. They took it out one time.
When did it happen?
I don't know. And every time I try and get an answer for it, I can't even get an answer. How much money we got in the rainy day fund? You want me to find out who took three million dollars?
Angelo, and I sit here and I ask questions, and then I'm told...
Well, what does that tell you?
Wait a minute.
We're not getting the answers we're supposed to from these department heads.
I'm sitting here, and you brought that three million dollars to me three or four times in our conversations over the phone or whatever, in person, and I was shocked. I said, "Well, I gotta go look into this." And then John, I had a conversation with John. John says, "At any given time that the sewer department asks me for the three million dollars, I can supply that." And I said, "Well, show me how." Then he shows me, per my request, investment balances and interest rates. Centerville Bank, we have ninety-five thousand dollars in it at a point one percent interest rate. Washington Trust, five hundred and forty thousand at point two five. Washington Trust at three point six million at point two five. Northern Capital, five hundred and sixteen thousand at one point... So, you got four and a half million dollars somewhere that if they ask for it, it's there. Now, when somebody says it's not there, and I know Mark's getting rid, I asked him...
Because it's not there.
Because he says it's not there, but if this is, if this is what's in an account, it's gonna be there somewhere.
Listen, just like they stood in front of me right here and I said, and Fred was sitting right there, and I said, "Fred, we're in the hole one point two mil..." Oh, no. I was wrong. We're one point seven. But he said he had a deficit. He had a surplus, and it's on record, he had a surplus of over nine hundred thousand dollars. How that surplus came, I don't know what kind of numbers. That's why I told you. You need a financial guy in at that position. You put a town planner in a job, it's like me letting you sit down my salvage yard or my auto sale yard and tell you to run the daily operations. He took off. He knew that this was coming down the road. I don't care what anybody says. He knew. He seen the writing on the wall. And Fred, thank you very much. Whoever adored you, they're paying for your price right now.
And Angelo, the other thing I do wanna point out, and none of you have had it, but every year, we've received an audit from two thousand twelve on... Every year, we sit here and a gentleman comes up here, tells us what's going on in the audit. Every year, you get a file that looks nice and pretty, has a little town hall picture or whatever it may have on it, and...
Do you remember asking that audit the question?
I can tell you.
And he said, "Yes, you're in trouble." Do you remember?
And I was ignored. I can attest that Councilman Giroux sat here and asked about the rainy day fund last year and why it was so low.
He said, "What's happening to the rainy day fund?"
Because I sat here, I went just like this to him, circled it, and he asked the question. So, it was brought up last year.
Did you okay them to touch the rainy day fund?
No, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Angelo. I just wanna make it clear.
Just get my point across.
Angelo, what I'm trying to say, with the article in the paper, it made it sound like seven million dollars was taken out without the authority. About two million.
There was four million dollars in the rainy day fund. She explained it very clearly. If you add up the deficits for two years, one point five, one point seven, that's another three million dollars. It comes to seven million dollars wasted from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and seventeen. That's the ballgame.
Wasted or paid, or bills were paid. You know, that's the big thing. Bills do have to be paid.
You know what? You guys should be more mad than me because I never had confidence in Fred. Or you guys thought he was the wonder boy. You oughta be more mad because he denied your trust.
All right, question?
I already expected it from him.
I have two questions, actually. I'd just like to get them in. Number one, we just said we had three million dollars in money from the sewer plant, correct?
Someone made that statement, but that's correct.
Is that correct? It's just three million? Is it still three million?
Yes.
Can that go back into the fund exclusively for the sewer plant?
It could go back into a fund exclusively for the sewer plant. I would not recommend that you do that at this point, however.
Because we'd be busted.
How come?
There's, the town has about seven million dollars in liquid asset in a checking account. That's a combination of sewer authority money, town money, and school department money. That money is being used to pay bills across the board for the sewer authority and the town. The school department pays bills, but they pay based on the town providing them. I believe it's monthly payments or... Monthly payments at a set rate. My concern, and it's my concern as the town manager today, would be if you were to remove that three million dollars and put it into a separate account, that there could be a point, and I'm not saying we're at this point today, but there could be a point where the town would not have enough liquidity unless it started to cash in those other accounts and draw that money in. And it's a very complicated issue.
Okay.
To continue to pay those...
What we have to be concerned about, if we have a major problem with that sewer line, and Bernie can come up here, I asked him to be here tonight, and thank you. Where would we get that money and what harm's way? That is surrounding communities' monies, so...
Well, what's the odds of, and I'm going back to what Jay said, and I agree with Angelo with this last week, why isn't it in its own fund? And what would it take to start getting it over to its own fund? I'm not saying take the whole three million out now, but within the next three years or something to that extent, to avoid this.
It would be a transfer to a fund that would be...
Designated strictly for that.
Yeah, so that'd be the finance department would transfer that into a separate account.
Why are they all in one account?
For liquidity purposes. So, the town pays bills on behalf of the sewer authority. The town pays bills on behalf of the town.
You don't have your own...
So, that, that funding is an account so that the town, you know, when a bill comes in, a check is cut, and it goes out. So, that is basically...
Wouldn't it make more sense to have separate accounts for each thing?
But again...
But what Mark just said...
We really actually shouldn't be, shouldn't be discussing municipal finance and how it works at this meeting. I mean, that's a very complicated issue. It's something that... It's something that is beyond a public meeting to have a discussion about. It would be hours and hours worth of discussion.
Bernie?
I have one more question.
At the sewer? Go ahead, Jay.
All right, one more question.
All right, so... Hold on one second. Guys, we gotta be able to hear the tape and everything else, please.
This is off the topic of the sewer commission now. Next year at this time, and I know we've spoken about it, but where are we gonna be? I know we don't have a crystal ball, but if we're using this year's money, say it's one point two on the low end, of this budget's money, to re...
We're using last year's budget. We're just cutting things out of it.
All right, so, we're not gonna have this money to cut out in our shortfall for next year, correct? My question is, where's this? To make up the deficit for next year, where's, for this year or here, what's it gonna come from?
So, your couple things, the premise is that we're expecting a deficit in two thousand eighteen, right? So, that's the premise. So, basically, what we're going to do when the new town manager gets here is we're going to sit down and we're gonna recreate the two thousand eighteen budget. I've already issued, I was gonna save this for the manager report, and I think you gentlemen have received it. We've issued a spending freeze for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen. No, we will not authorize any non-essential spending. So we've already taken, begun to take action to resolve any potential deficit in the eighteen budget. We're going to go, we're gonna look at the eighteen budget, we're gonna look at the collection rates, we're gonna look at prior year collectibles. We're also gonna look at the expenses that, expenses that have been budgeted, and we're going to put in, you know, the numbers that we believe um, are appropriate in the, um, collection rates that, you know, historically have been, uh, achieved by the town. If we find that there is a variance between revenue and expenses, and we don't know that there is, but I suspect that there probably is, we will take corrective actions similar to what we're doing this evening, earlier on in the year, uh, where we can stop spending, we can stop capital improvements, we can, we can do certain things, um, to, to save money as opposed to find money. That's, that's the plan.
Thanks. Bernie, how many sewer subcommittees meetings have myself or yourself as then acting, as then the, the, whatever, planner, manager, uh, about our sewer enterprise fund? What were we told every time?
It was brought up probably three or four meetings, uh, going back to the end of two thousand sixteen and beginning of two thousand seventeen. Uh, but just to go over the, the financial a little bit, what I received just, uh, last week from, from our auditor. The three point one five four million that we're talking about investments that Center of, uh, the Centerville Bank, that's in the sewer enterprise investment fund. There's another three million eighty-three thousand that is in reserve as bond payment. So when we take out bonds, we have to have so much, uh, we have to hold so much for final payment. That's the three million eighty-three thousand. The remainder, two point six million, is what's in the general fund, if I'm, if I'm correct. Now, I, the only thing I, the only thing I'd like to point out tonight is, I came to the council two years ago, talked about assessment money, how we needed to be putting money aside for catastrophic failures of our sewer system. And I asked to take the assessment money, put half of it away, and then last year I came back and said, take a hundred percent of it and put it away. We actually raised the rates a little bit, took some heat. But in that fund right now, or exactly part of that two point six million, is just shy of a million dollars. So that is in the, that should be in the sewer fund, and that's the one thing I, but the remainder, one point six million, as long as I've been here since two thousand twelve off and on, and long prior to that, they were using the sewer fund, uh, to pay the bills. I mean, I can't answer the question, uh, as far as when it started. I, I'm sure it was probably twenty, thirty years ago.
Oh, we, we think it was ninety-six.
Okay.
Nineteen ninety-six?
That's when the bonded issue regarding the seventy-two stuff finally gets traded out. It was under Rick Padula, Al Manning, and John Rock were on the council. At that time, it finally flip-flopped with the sewer committee. Sewer commission was no longer paying the town back, so that's at the point in time when the money was in the account.
Well, when I did come up at the sewer commission, as Angelo was talking about, um, it was mentioned that we could put it aside in a sewer, sewer fund, but in, in the general fund, that million dollars for the assessment.
And I, and I think one of the reasons is you don't have a finance department.
It doesn't matter. She can handle it.
I'm not, Angelo.
You can tell by, by the profits that they have.
Angelo, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying you do not have a finance department, and that's possibly why, and again, nineteen ninety-six.
I spoke to Christine. It's a simple thing. She's doing it all now.
Uh, it's not that simple.
Well, I had, I had it with Christine. She said she wouldn't need any more help, that it would be the same thing as what she is doing now. That was the, I don't know what's her point.
I mean, we do, we do sewer billing down there, um, which is a major, 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 uh, part of our work down there. As far as, uh, the finance, I, I think you would definitely need more, more employees.
At least it'd probably still be there.
It is still there. Y'all set?
Thanks, Bernie.
Thank you, Bernie. Alan?
Commander Alan G. Palazzo, Five Robin Lane, U.S. Navy retired, uh, and I think many of you who've been here for a while agree that I know the West Warwick pension fund, or at least I used to. I followed it for seventeen years.
Alan, just wait a minute, before, before you go on, this is the ordinance for the deficit, not the pension funds.
I know. I wanna address it, okay? Because I heard something here tonight that really disturbed me, where we're coming up with this money. This five-year plan, the teachers, the police, the fire department, municipal employees came up to the plate and, uh, agreed to concessions to do things, okay? Uh, and when I first started raising red flags on the pension fund, it was ninety-eight percent funded. I believe the latest I saw it was somewhere less than eighteen percent. The issue that bothers me more than anything, and hopefully municipal employees and police and fire who are sitting here took notice, was the fact that the town plans on taking other post-employment benefits that are owed to those people that will, that are owed by the town, and they're plugging a gap with it. This is the same BS that got us into trouble with the pension in the first place. And I heard the statement that, oh, it's not required. I believe, I'm not sure, cause I had gave up on the pension fund, I told you. When I gave up on the way this town does business, it's either GASP forty-five or GASP forty-eight that requires that the towns set aside funds for other post-employment benefits. And right now, you're, maybe they didn't understand it, but I sure the hell did. And it's an issue that they need, if I were them, I'd be going out and buy tar and feathers after this meeting because you're doing it to them again. You're doing it to them again. They may not realize it. I'm raising a red flag again tonight. Somebody has to do the right thing for this town. And you're talking about cutting, uh, expenses that aren't required. I see one sitting right there. We don't need it. Mr. Williamson's budgets over the past, I follow them from two thousand four to two thousand eight. There was something like two hundred and seventy-eight percent over budget. And I submitted a letter to Mr. Goslin about that, about late invoices. Yes, it was fixed. I just read that the invoices were recently submitted in July for last September. There's somebody else out there who says, how can you maintain a budget if you don't know what the heck you're spending? I agree, but I don't know how many communities have a solicitor at every meeting if something comes up you don't know about. Payable it, okay? That's an unnecessary expense. And I just wanted to put that out there. I am warning this town and the employees, you are headed into dangerous waters once again, okay? And that's what I'm talking about, is the deficit and what's happening with the other post-employment benefits and GASP, whatever it is, forty-five, eight.
I think it's forty, cause I heard you saying.
Okay, sixty, no, it wasn't that high. It's a forty-something. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just about gonna throw my hands up.
Just, can I, can I just make one statement? Just, just to correct something you said, and you, I, I understand what you're saying. There's no requirement that the town pay in advance for other post-employment benefits. And I'm not saying that that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that that's the fact of the matter. The requirement is that the town account for those, so that they, they basically carry that on their ledger sheet.
But you're not carrying it. You're spending it.
No, no, it is being carried on the ledger sheet as part of the, as the audit, and it's telling you.
You're getting to the point where the.
What the long-term liability is under GASP for OPEB, for other post-employment benefits. That is the requirement.
And the issue is, you're not gonna be able to do it.
I'm not arguing.
You're gonna come into as a pay-as-you-go pension fund.
I'm just, I'm, yeah, so, so I'm just correcting a statement, a technical statement you made. I'm not arguing with you about what is a best practice. I'm just telling you what is technically required.
Alan, just, just to clarify something, and just to throw quick numbers out there. In two thousand two or two thousand, the payout per year from the pension fund was one point four, one point five million dollars. And I'm, might be off by a hundred thousand here or there. Two thousand ten, it was over four million dollars. Okay, two thousand seventeen, we're at nine point something million dollars per year payout in pension.
And my point again with regard.
And nobody's ever argued that it's unsustainable, and I know that Councilman Padula is gonna say that.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say something right now. Out of the nine million that we've been putting in every year.
We've been putting in eight point one seven this year.
With the stock market that went right out of control, right up, and you know it's gonna repeat itself, that's ready to drop anytime now. And we're still in the same place, worse than we were when we were putting in the one point five million. So you figure it out.
Could you imagine, uh, let me ask you this. You keep saying that, but if we were to state a fiscal, so from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen, we averaged about two million dollars. I'm saying average. Add them all up, we averaged two million dollars. If we continue just putting two million dollars in and paying out nine, with seven in the hole.
Do you know?
Twenty-nine million dollars in the pension fund right now.
Do you know what the future, what the, what the advisors told us in the year two thousand and twenty? Is it twenty? That we have to contribute just to maintain eighteen million a year.
On the existing contracts. You're correct.
Eighteen million, people.
But Mr. Goslin.
Sell now.
One more point regarding the pension fund. I raised red flags. You guys weren't there. I was denigrated. I was made fun of, but in the end, I was right. And what bothers me is certain members of this town administration at one point in time asked me, well, what can we do? Cause this money had disappeared. And there is something called fiduciary responsibility. The people who advise this town, and I said, hey, you can go after them. You may not recover twenty million dollars that was being spent, but God, four million is better than losing twenty. And people ignored that because the political powers behind the walls didn't wanna hear it. So, and I pity you guys because you are stuck with a mess. And, you know, I've distanced myself for a long time from becoming involved, but I'm upset now. I'm upset with the legal fees we pay. I'm upset with what's happened to the, uh, rainy day fund. Oh, by the way, that's required by the town charter to be maintained at five percent of the, of the municipal budget. School department, they may have a surplus, but we have to maintain that level of effort. We know that for a fact. So I'll just, uh, leave it there. Hopefully the town employees will take a stand.
Thank you. Just take your name and address for the record.
Yeah, he just came on.
Hi, I'm Helene Anderson, and I live at six fifty East Greenwich Avenue. That's.
Helene, this.
Quaker Valley condominiums, six fifty East Greenwich Avenue. Um, you poor guys are getting bombarded by the Navy because I was also, I also worked for the Navy. I retired. And I was a, um, project manager, and I managed budgets five hundred million and up. So I know a good budget when I see it, and I know a bad budget when I see it. And unfortunately, I've had many opportunities to sit in on, uh, budget meetings for projects that were way over budget. So I know what's going on. Um, one of the reasons that your budget is, that you're having trouble understanding your budget is because when your budget comes up for referendum, you don't have all of the information you need in that budget. The, um, you don't, the, I look, I, I really had to dig for information. Thanks. I really had to dig for information, um, on state websites, on the town websites, to get all of the information that I, that, um, I really needed to understand, where is the budget? Where's the money going? Where has it gone? Where, what do we have for our two thousand and eighteen budget? Um, and there's just some very basic things you're doing wrong, bottom line. One of the things you're doing wrong is when, when a department consistently spends over budget on a budget line, you need to increase that budget line for the following fiscal year, or tell the department head that he's gonna figure out how to stay within that budget line.
Helene, one thing during our budget season, and I'll stick up for the fire department in one aspect when it comes to overspending with overtime, is the council cut three hundred thousand dollars of overtime on the fire chief when he can't propose his budget. He said, please, don't do it. It's, you've already cut my budget. You're gonna cut my budget three hundred thousand dollars, and we're gonna overspend, and it's gonna fail. He warned the council. The council went ahead and still moved that budget forward. It voted, and he's overspent by three hundred thousand dollars.
Well.
So.
By the way, I feel against the budget.
And, and you know, you, you might say that in the stock market, past history is not a guarantee of poor, of, of, of future performance, but that's not the case with the budget. Past history is a guarantee of future performance. You have to look at the past history to assess what the budget's gonna be in, in the future. Your budget is only an estimate, but your estimate is based on your past knowledge. And so when you don't give, when a department head doesn't give you an accurate budget, and you're not listening to the department head either, then you're guaranteed to fail. And that's where you are. You've been failing for the last three years. Um, when you see, when we, when a budget comes to you for review, you should have a balance sheet coming with it. The balance sheet should tell you what your current assets are and what your current liabilities are, and which your monthly expenditures are. You should have a twelve-month monthly expenditure chart that comes with that budget. Um, and, and the current, um, the two thousand and eighteen budget I looked at had actual expensive information up to twelve thirty-one. But that information is useless in a budget that's not getting approved until May. So, uh, and you had information up to April thirtieth and could have been in that budget, but it wasn't, and it should have been. You've got four million dollars in unrestricted funds in, for the, uh, school department, which are, they're not exactly committed, they're planned. That's a big slush fund in a school department. And they actually should not have that much money, um, as a slush fund. So that, all of those expenditures should be decided on by the council. And, uh, I think I'm hearing that you maybe wanna use that, some of that money.
Can I ask one question? Cause she brought up the school topic. Do we have that ability?
You have no authority over the school department's advantages.
You don't, right?
Why not?
You can't adjust that?
You cannot.
Who, who has that authority and how do you make that change?
It's state law.
You cannot. Rhode Island general law requires a minimum maintenance of effort. That means that the town council cannot reduce the appropriation to the school department from one year to another. So whatever money they have, they're allowed to keep. If they realize additional money during the fiscal year, either federal, state money, they're allowed to keep that. That's Rhode Island law.
And so if they've got, so if they have an extra four million dollars, you can't reduce their budget from fifty-five to fifty-one, the following milli.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, okay, so that's Rhode Island state law, so that we need to, folks, we need to take that up with our senator, okay?
So, could this happen, though? If, just use your, your numbers, say four million dollars in the, uh, in the black as a slush fund. We can't take that from them or request it from them, but in conjunction with, with working together for the better interest of the town, could they say to us, here's four million dollars we haven't used? No, I'm serious. I'm serious.
So, so a couple, a couple.
I, I will say.
We're in such a bind here.
Let me just.
That the town is the town.
Let me, like, can I, I just wanna correct one thing, and I, and I know people use jargon in terms, but I would not refer to that as a, as a slush fund.
Well.
A lot, a lot of that money is being used for capital expenses, and I'm not here to defend the school department, but capital expenses, improvements to school buildings, improvements to programs.
Sir, I, I, I wanna tell you that the latest thing I saw from you said, uh, was that eight hundred thousand had been used in the last year um, for that, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, which means the rest of it is just planned, not used.
Well, I can tell you that they used, you look, just look, if you take a look at the high school and middle school alone, Webster Night Drive, the track and field, the lights, all that came out of their surpluses. That would not have happened without those, without that.
I understand.
They've done all capital improvements, electrical, uh, sprinklers, all that stuff, they're taking out of there. Instead of coming to us and saying, we need this money, they, they're actually utilizing. They're not using it for salaries or benefits right now. They're using it for capital improvement.
I understand that. And I mean, it was, it was, it was clear, it was clear in the audit report what was going on with it. Um, it was also, but four million is, is a fair amount of money. They really should be coming back and, and to you, you know. If they've got a million dollars left over at the end of the year, their school budget was a million dollars too high, bottom line, you know?
I know everybody laughed, but i- is that an option?
It, that.
Cause I really think we need to think outside the box going forward.
So the, the school department creates a budget, that budget goes to the school committee, the school committee approves the budget. That budget request is then forwarded to the town council. Town council, if, if the budget is requesting an increase, the town council has the ability not to grant the increase. If the budget is level-funded, the town council is required to provide that minimum maintenance of effort. Can the school department ask for a budget that is below the current maintenance of effort? Yes, they can. Are they likely to do that? No, they're not. The, the, the school committee and the town, and I, you know, I'm, I have not been engaged with the school department that long. But my understanding is, and it's unusual that you have this arrangement in the town of West Warwick, because it's not the typical arrangement in most communities throughout the state of Rhode Island. But the school department has been using that surplus money to do capital improvements, where in other communities, capital improvements are bonded, and they are paid for out of the town side of the budget, okay? Not in the school side of the budget, and it's not included in the school's maintenance of effort. So that's a benefit that the school department's providing the town. I don't know, you know, to what degree. I don't know their projects. Also, the school department has agreed, they agreed last year, this year, and we've been discussing it with them, and, and they're very, we've been very clear with them that we're hoping, and we suspect that they will be coming with a level-funded budget next year, not asking for an increase in appropriation. The problem is not on the school side. The problem is on the town side of the budget.
So I guess we know what to do.
Thank you, Helene.
Um, no, one more, a couple, just, well, two more things, actually. Um, I'm gonna hand this to you, cause I, I'm gonna, I have a question about that. I'm gonna let you take a look at it. The, uh, you know, it, it really isn't fair to the, to the town finance manager when companies are building, are billing, you know, many, many months in arrears. It, it, you know, it, it's hard to, it, it, because really what he should be doing is identifying a liability at the end of the fiscal year for all of that money that has yet to been built, that yet to be built. And, um, you know, and that, that's a real burden on him. And, you know, and that, that's a real burden on him to, to figure that out, so I would, I encourage you to please tell the contractors and the vendors to get their bills in within 30 days, and if they can't, fire them.
That's later on in the agenda.
Oh, good. Okay. The last thing I had was about half a million dollars I had a question about in the budget. Are you looking at that, that chart?
This is the pension contributions?
Yeah, well, I don't know. See, it says, it says pension, but I don't know if it's this year, if this is current pensions or if this is pensions that you still have to pay back under ARC.
No, this is the required annual contribution, annual required contribution for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Okay. So, it's got 4.48, or $480,000 for the waste management department. Don't they contribute that $480,000 to the town and then you put it into the budget, into the pension?
That's, that's correct.
That's correct, right? So I should see somewhere in the revenue statement for our town that there's $480,000 being transferred in from waste management into the general fund, right?
If I can clarify that.
Thanks.
Sure.
What this chart that she's referring to, from the, from the, from the budget, actually shows all the components of the total recommended contribution by the actuary. It does not actually illustrate just what the general fund's portion is, this is all sources. These contributions go directly into the pension system from these various, various agencies. For example, the wastewater, $480,000 that you mentioned, that is a contribution that is expensed to the wastewater fund and paid directly into the pension fund. Another example would be the school. There's a school amount of 1.48. Again, that money goes directly from the school department, it's expensed in their budget, and goes into the pension fund directly. The portion that is in the general fund budget is the first two line items, the 6.73, which is in general government, and the .51 that's actually within the departments. And basis, so basically, the total contribution from the general fund in the budget is the seven point, I'm sorry, the 6.73 and the .51. So that's all that's actually in, in the town's budget.
So.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I understand now, thank you. Sometimes it's not easy to figure out the town budget. The, the point here, gentlemen, is that, just basically, median income in West Warwick is about $50,000 or so. Our surrounding communities, East Greenwich, they're about 80% higher. Coventry and Warwick, they're about 20% higher. The point I'm making here is that because we're, we're at the $50,000 range and we're a lot lower than these other towns, we have to be very careful with the risk we take. Because this, because the people in this town just can't afford mismanagement, we can't afford risky decisions. They're not like the other towns. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, I just want to go back, you know, you are right, you vote no for the budget every single year because it has a tax increase. Could you imagine if we, where we'd be if we didn't raise taxes?
And then, also, you did. You know what? Imagine where you'd be if you didn't make $10,000 a month, you wouldn't be spending 20.
But Angela, I understand that, but you all, but don't.
Don't even go there, you don't like the, you're not going to like the answer I'm going to come up with.
Okay, but also, you voted to cut the overtime on the fire department also.
I voted to cut the overtime, but there should have been a freeze on it. There's a lot of things that I voted on that I can't get done.
I understand, but, you know, when you throw out statements like that, just be clear.
There's no statements, I'm clear. Does anybody think I'm not clear?
Nope.
I'm very clear. If you don't understand it, tell me, I'll tell you again.
Mr. Leahy?
Good evening. William Leahy, I'm the president of the West Warwick Fire Fighters, local 1104. I just wanted to ask if Mr. Williamson has had an opportunity to review the OPEB trust document to even see if what this plan is legal?
Yes and no.
Those are the answers we get.
Well, I'm just trying to tell you, the question, whether it's legal or not, the answer is yes, if the review of the document allows for that. Now, the question is, should it be challenged, then the third party's going to make a decision?
Well, I have to tell you, the, the employees are paying attention, and I don't have any intention of taking a hit like I did on my pension after giving 25 years to the town, okay? We brought the OPEB payment to the table for negotiations because we knew that would be a problem in the future. That money's taken out of my check each week and out of the employee's check each week, and now you want to pay bills with it. We're going to do everything we can to fight it. So I'm wondering who would I would go to to get a copy of the OPEB trust document? Mark, could you?
Yeah, the finance department.
Finance department, oh, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add one note to that. The, the actual OPEB trust that, you know, he just referred to and has been mentioned is something that's administered through, through the inter-local, Rhode Island inter-local trust as part of a pool, documented something that the council had approved. Before Mark and I discussed any potential transfers from that, we did review the documents as far as making them available, you know, have no objection to that.
Can you give the council, because like you just said, it comes out of his check, can you give us the exact dollar amount?
Sure.
That the employees contributed?
Absolutely.
And how much the town has contributed?
Absolutely.
The taxpayers?
I, I can tell you, there's approximately one.
Since 2015?
There's approximately 1.7 million of total town contributions and employees. I want to say, just rough, I can provide the actual number, but I believe it's about $200,000 that's been accumulated from the employees of that 1.7. And, you know, I'll give you the numbers. And as far as the documents, you know, I don't see any reason why we, why we can't provide those documents. It's not something that was requested that they be posted on the website, or else I would have, as I've done with the actuarial reports and whatnot. But I also just wanted to mention one other thing. The town has been, in the annual budget, budgeting the pay-go, the pay-as-you-go retiree costs. What this transfer that we're looking for the council to approve is a reimbursement of costs that we incurred in fiscal '17. Just, not, I don't know if that means anything to you guys, but I just wanted to make that clear. It's not like we're actually.
What costs were incurred, that's the.
One, I want to say it was approximately 1.7 for retirees.
What were they for?
They were for retiree claims, medical claims.
Healthcare.
Correct.
I want to be clear, I want everybody to be clear.
Medical bills.
Medical bills, medical claims.
Medical claims, correct.
Okay.
Let me ask a question, so if we deny this, what's our other, what are any other options? Because nobody's mentioned anything other than this.
If you deny it, you'll run a deficit. I'll have to notify the state that the town has run a deficit, the state will step in, require intermediate action, they'll require you to do another five-year plan, you'll, you'll basically have the same scenario you had three or four years ago for the five-year plan.
And just, just to clarify, you have reached out to the state with this plan?
So I was going to, I was going to mention that in the, in the manager's update, but John and I had a conference call with the auditor general and the Department of Finance on Friday to discuss our plan. They were pleased, they weren't pleased at the position of the town, but they were pleased that we were being proactive in trying to resolve a deficit prior to the town actually experiencing a deficit. Their position is that if the town approves this ordinance as, as presented, we will close the year with a balanced budget, we will not have a deficit, there will be no further action required by the town. They did ask us to provide them a copy of the executed ordinance, and we agreed also to have monthly update meetings with them moving forward on the fiscal year '18 budget. So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to over the situation where the town actually runs a real deficit, and the state is notified and the state comes in to intercede with the town's business.
Let me, is that the same finance, same state entity, same state house that running a $1 billion deficit?
Yes, it is.
And we're going to take advice from them?
Yes, it is. That's why I prefer to take.
You know what, I'm a financial advisor, I just lost $3 million, you've got five I can invest for you.
I hear you, councilman, that's why I think we should do this.
Just like Olugley, her famous ideas, she wiped her hands, bye-bye. So we're taking advice from someone who can't even run their own house. Get the experts in here, let them look, forget the state.
No, well, I'm required under state law to notify the state. So I'm, so I'm following, I'm simply following state law, I'm following the charter. You know what, you know what the ordinance says, councilman, you've read it, it's clearly spelled out.
Yeah, I'm just being sarcastic.
I know you are, I'm strongly recommending that the council approves this.
Paul Petrosi, retired fire marshal for the town of West Warwick. I stood at this podium last year, and I'm sure you recall that I came up here and I complained that the council and the town manager, in my opinion, were spending money like drunk assailers on a Friday night. I got told at that meeting, and it's on record by the town manager, that there was a million-dollar surplus, that everything was great, okay? Now I'm being told that just in the rainy day fund, there's $4 million missing. I'd like to know, which nobody's asked yet, number one, where did the $4 million go? Number two, who moved that money without council approval? And number three, what's going to happen to that person?
First, let me just clarify, $1 million was moved by council approval out of that $4 million. Got 13 resolutions in front of me, all approved, I announced it earlier. What I think you're confusing the $1 million with, and I'll have to go back and listen, and, and I know, because I, I had this conversation with a lot of town employees who said, think we had a $1 million surplus. What I think Fred was trying to say, and I'll go back, is we were $1 million ahead of the five-year plan, not a surplus.
Good thing we were to win $8 million.
And at the time, I asked, I asked Fred and the council to cut the five-year plan in half if we were in that good a shape, and I was told that it couldn't be done. Now, from what I understand, I run a business also, and you know that, you know, it's simple mathematics. We're coming to the end of the five-year plan, and I know what you're going to do, you're going to tell me you need another five-year plan because of what happened, okay? And this is bull. I was told, I don't care what Fred thought, or what you think Fred thought, I was told, and it's on record, last year when I complained about the way this town was spending money in the midst of a five-year plan, when we were supposed to be conserving, and I was, I was part of that plan. So I know that there was supposed to be a freeze on spending by the town, except for emergencies that never, that never, nobody ever followed up on. But I was told that there was a million-dollar surplus last year, and it's on record, okay? So now, take that $1 million surplus and add that to the $4 million, and I'm going to tell you something right now. I don't care if it's $100,000 that was moved out of that, out of the rainy day fund. Somebody moved that money without town, council approval, that money's gone, I want to know where it is, I want to know what it was used on, and I want to know what's going to happen to that person or those persons who moved that money without council approval.
Can I, can I just ask a question? So, you know, forgive my ignorance as a, as a new councilman, but you're saying some of them went to council for approval, but some didn't go to council for approval, was that, is that like a normal part of daily business where?
No.
So.
I mean, shouldn't it all go before council?
So, yes, it should all go before the council, according to the charter, it should go before the council.
Every bit of it.
So basically, if we're talking fiscal year 16, and I think that's what that gentleman was talking about, it would be last year, there was a deficit of $1 million. So at the end of the year, when the auditors come in and they reckon, again, there was a statement earlier that a budget is an estimate, and that is absolutely a correct statement. It's an estimate, it's a, it's a good faith estimate, and that, the budget has to be managed throughout the year. If you're seeing cost overruns, you need to, you need to pull those back, if you're seeing shortages in revenues, you need to cut expenditures during the year, real time. Basically, at the end of the fiscal year, when the auditors came in, they found that the revenues were underestimated and the expenses were overestimated, right? So, so, so we overspent and we didn't realize the revenue that, that we thought we were going to realize. This is after the close of the fiscal year, and I think the audit is complete sometime in the winter. What the requirement is at that point is that you pay your bills. So when we talk about transfer, I mean, what we're doing here is we're recommending a transfer on paper, getting council authorization to take certain actions. If it gets beyond that point, those actions take place anyway, because bills get paid, money gets paid, and when you say there's a rainy day fund, or there's a surplus, or any other terms you want to use, this money is, is accounted for on paper, but it's in a bank account. So that when you, when you pull out what you owe and what you have, right? Your, your assets and your liabilities, as John would say, you've got the difference, and the difference is the surplus.
Right.
So at the end of the day, as you're paying your bills, and when they reconcile the budget, oh, lo and behold, the revenue wasn't there, the bills got paid, there's a deficit. So if you, if you're not tracking that in real time, or you're not doing estimates in real time to see where you are, when the auditor comes in, it's either discovered that you have a surplus or a deficit. If it's covered, discovered you have a deficit, those bills have already been paid, that money has come out of that account.
Right.
So what is on paper is reduced by that amount regardless, because the bills have already been paid.
And so those transfers are approved by the manager?
Those transfers are done routinely as transfers to pay bills. So if you're over-expending a line item, that could be problematic in that, you know, the finance department won't authorize that, but if you're, if you're within your expense side of the budget, but your revenues haven't come in as expected, you're paying bills based on your expense.
Right.
And then, lo and behold, you find your revenues didn't come in as expected, and you've got a, you've got a deficit.
So, and I've had some numerous conversations with Mark and John over the last few weeks. You know, our collection rate is somewhere around 95.8%, somewhere around there. So this, this 4%, of people who haven't paid their taxes, and unfortunately, you know, I've, I've looked at different scenarios, how do we get that 4% back as fast as possible? Because people do wait to pay for it. You know, I've talked about amnesty, Mark, where we'll give you one month, if you can come in and pay your taxes up to date, we'll waive interest or whatever. These are the ideas that I've thrown out, I think I've talked to Jay about them also. The payment plans, I mean, personally, I think they got to stop. Because I look at a list of payment plans, there's individuals with five, six, seven pieces of property on a payment plan, okay? If they went up for tax sale, the town would get their taxes, and then that person would be responsible to pay that person who bought their tax sale within 12 months.
One thing, one thing you're not, you're not figuring out, Dave. Thank God people don't pay their taxes, because that's a half a million dollars, we wouldn't have, we'd be another half a million dollars in the hole.
Well, I know you're talking about the interest, Angelo, but when you're sitting there with $4 million, $5 million that hasn't been paid yet, and, and you, and you know, you brought a comment, you said a comment to me about the delinquents. Well, it's only $200,000, but that's compounding almost every time. So if you've got a shortfall in somebody not paying their taxes, you're compounding your.
We're lucky there's only 4%. We're fourth highest, I think we're moved to fourth already. Taxes in the state, people can't afford it anymore.
I brought this up, I spoke to Ernie about this, and I brought it up here in the council meeting. At one time, like, I, I saw what Warwick was doing with their budget, they went to 99% tax collection rate.
Yeah, I don't care what Warwick does.
No, but, but again, we stayed at 96%. I understand you don't care what Warwick does, I'm saying, we're trying, if, if we moved our budget to 99%, we would set everybody up to fail because there's that 4% that's not paying.
You'd have an unrealistic budget like we always had.
One last, one last comment.
Mr. President, I, I'm sorry, Angelo, but I don't think you guys have any other choice but to pass the, this resolution as, as stated.
Oh, no, we understand that.
Okay, you know.
We have no other choice.
Yeah, you kind, you don't. However, all you're really doing is kicking the can down the road.
Like we've been for four years.
Okay.
Like the town's been doing for 100 years, kicking the can down the road since 1992.
Well, and, and you know, so if, if you keep doing the same thing, you're going to get the same results, right?
I, I understand.
Okay.
But we're moving ourselves to first place in taxes.
Well, yeah, and, and we may end up having to, you know, get a little more taxes, too, in order to get healthy.
Not by me, if I can help it.
Well, I don't know, then you're going to be cutting personnel, because that's the only place you're going to, you're going to be able to get enough money out of, out of the budget to do it. So, I don't know if anybody really wants that to happen either. Certainly need, we certainly need the personnel that we've got in the town at the moment, so. Anyway, the, you're, you're going to be facing this again, and you're going to, actually going to be facing it worse, especially if you're going to start cutting OPEB, okay? I mean, I understand you have to use it, because you have no choice, but, you know.
We run a budget, when we do budget time, and this is, I can tell you, we don't have[1789.01] have this many people in the crowd at our budget hearings, okay?
Yeah.
And people like you, who have very good knowledge of a budget, I'd love to see you in the crowd.
I just joined this town, so that's why you haven't seen me before, but you're gonna see me a lot now.
You're very right, thank you.
So, you know, and, and so, so, you know, you, it is time to really ta, take some serious action though. We can, you really can't even wait. He did the right thing by, by stopping all unnecessary expenditures and anything that was over the budget, although you're already over budget in some line items. But, uh, he did the right thing there, but you're gonna actually have to do a little more.
I think you bring up a good point. What, what are we gonna do to prevent this from happening next year?
So, you know, you guys, I'm happy to sit down with a couple of you one-on-one, just to give you some ideas on what you, what you can do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, answer him.
You have to create a more realistic, more realistic budget.
I have to talk.
Hold on, hold on, let me say, let me listen, let me listen to Mark though. What, what are we gonna do to prevent this from happening again, and again, and again?
You, you need to make adjustments in your budget. You have, you have to have a more realistic collection rate, so the collection rate has to go down. There's something in the budget called prior year collectibles, which I think is budgeted this year at about two point four, probably comes in about one point eight or two million dollars. That needs to be reduced. So you already know, looking at the budget, that your revenues are not gonna come in as they have been, as they have been, you know, in the budget, presented in the budget. So they have to be cuts. So it's gonna be a combination of cuts and increases in taxes.
Keeping track of what we're doing, and what we're spending, and what's coming in throughout the year?
You need to keep track of what you're doing throughout the year, so that, so, you know, quarterly, I mean, I'm used to, me personally, I'm used to doing it weekly or monthly in my, in my old job, I would track the budget. I would track the revenue. So that's, you know, that's the responsibility of me, as the person, if I was the town manager, that's my responsibility to track that, and if I see, if I see any shortfalls or any overages, it's my responsibility to take corrective action.
And I just wanna clarify, and I wanna answer something Paul said earlier. Having numerous conversations with Ernie, and I know Mark has had the conversations, he's asked that all personnel stay where they are until he come in and assess the town, and I, I told him I would grant that wish. So, to answer Paul's question, nothing as of now, okay? Er, Ernie will come in here, he's very financial oriented, um, just having our way here and our way there with him, I, I think he's gonna bring, um, a lot of knowledge, and a lot of budget items, and he's very, he's been meeting with Mark on a weekly basis. So, at this point, just to answer Paul's question, I think all personnel, and it's not fair to Mark, and we've also assured Mark, that he would not have to deal with department head personnel as interim manager. So, at this point, that's where I think we should stay until at least October tenth.
I agree.
You know, and it makes me sick that we, we can't, especially with the new councilman, we kinda got left with this like heaping pile of crap, you know, and no matter what choice we make, it's gonna be the wrong choice.
That's what you ran for office for. You were supposed to be here to fix it.
Well, it's, I don't have a magic wand, Ms. Spahn.
A magic wand, you have to get involved, you have to know what's going on in your town.
Well, as, as a town councilman, we, we trust, we trust the department heads.
Why?
If, if, hold on, I'm speaking right now. If there's a road that needs to be fixed, and I ask Dave Lombari what needs to be fixed, okay? And he says, well, you need to do this, and drill this hole, I, I don't know anything about roads, so I'm gonna trust Mr. Lombari. And if it doesn't get fixed right, then, then us as councilmen have to hold people responsible for not giving us the right information. That's what we're here for. I'm not supposed to be an expert on everything.
Okay.
And I didn't run on that premise that I was an expert at anything.
But you worked on the budget.
I just wanna answer something.
I never said I was an expert on the budget.
No, but you insisted that people vote for that budget.
I gotta...
You stated catastrophic problems if we voted no.
It would be worse, we'd be worse.
No, we wouldn't.
No, it wouldn't be. The question I came up here to ask was to Mark Carullo. Mark, I know you don't wanna answer this question.
I don't.
I know you don't, but I know you will. Can you tell me that we were handed a bill of goods when we voted for that budget that was accurate?
So, so, so the budget, the budget...
When we went to vote for the budget, and we were told that this was the best everybody could do, and let's stick with that five-year plan, do you really think that we were being given a true picture of what was going on in this town?
That's a, that's a, that's a complicated question you're asking.
I figured that.
So, so, the five-year, let me just explain the five-year plan. The five-year plan is simply a projection of expenditures and revenues over the course of five years.
Right.
Um, one of the requirements of the plan, however, is that there be an OPEB funding, and that the full ARC annual required contribution for the pension be met.
Right.
Those are requirements in that. There also contained concessions that were negotiated with the police, fire, municipal, school unions. And then there's a variance. And if you look at the five-year plan, and you follow the five-year plan, there is a variance in that plan. That, that variance is presented as an estimate of either a surplus or a deficit in the plan. And the purpose of the plan is as a planning tool. So as you read the plan, if you see a variance, if you see it being presented as a deficit, it's really the responsibility of, you know, the town manager to address the variance. And you either address that variance as recommending to the council that they raise taxes higher, or they cut expenditures, or they meet somewhere in the middle, okay? It's not something that's carved in stone, it's a living document, and it's intended to be a dynamic document that you follow and you make adjustments along the way. Based on my understanding, it appears that it was adopted, and it was being followed pretty much as it was presented. And so if there was a deficit, and it showed a deficit in the plan, then there was an expectation of a deficit. That's an improper use of that tool. So that's to answer your five-year plan question. With regard to any budget that was presented to the council and approved, none of those budgets are exactly in compliance with the five-year plan. As far as this year's budget, if you look at this year's budget, in, in particularly on the revenue side, and I think there was a statement earlier that when you're, when you're putting budgets together, you know, past history isn't, isn't exact, but it gives you an indication...
Absolutely.
...of the future. So, if a collection rate is coming in at ninety-six point five percent, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be prudent to budget a collection rate in excess of that. You know, councilmen mentioned that in Warwick, they budgeted to ninety-nine percent collection rate, that's absurd, that's not going to happen, as well as prior year collectibles. If you know that prior year collectibles are coming in averaging lower, then you have to lower that. What that means is you'd have to cut expenses proportionately, or you'd have to raise taxes proportionately.
Correct.
Um, so, when, when I looked at the budget, and it's simply me looking at a budget, it's not my budget, it's not my tool, my questions are, what's the collection rate, what's been the historical collection rate, what are previous year's collections, what's that been, what, how are your expenditures running? When you put those two, when you put those two items together, you see that there's, there, there is a, a, a deviation in the budget, whereas the revenues...
Nice word.
...are probably, um, overestimated. The expenses might be right on, they might be, they might be, you know, they might be underestimated in certain categories. I mean, we, we already heard about fire overtime. I mean, fire overtime is notorious in every community for coming in over budget. So that's something that was under budgeted. I won't, you know, I don't wanna bore you with the details of each and every line item that I've looked at, but there certainly is a deviation in the budget that was approved. That's why we're looking at the eighteen, already started looking at the eighteen budget, already started to...
I hope so.
...reconstruct the budget. So you've got a budget, so go reconstruct it, you look at what would be a more reasonable collection rate, prior year collectibles, and then determine what revenue you have available, look at your expenditures. If there's a variance there, now we've got to, we've got to bring that into balance. So it probably means cutting expenditure some. We've already started that.
Who's gonna be doing the cutting on the expenses?
So, basically what has to happen, in my opinion, and this is strictly my opinion, but whatever changes we make to the budget. Now, administrative-wise, you know, you, the town manager can direct department heads not to spend, which we've already done.
Right.
We've already issued that. But if there are other expenses that the council has approved, capital expenses, for example, or other expenses that are beyond a manager to a department head, something needs to come back to the council to basically tell them, hey, we can't put a new roof on this building this year, I want you to authorize us moving that from a capital expense into the general fund, so that we can take that money, supplant it, and pay bills for it. That's just...
What about waste in the general administration of this town?
Waste in what regard?
Waste in money that's probably being spent that doesn't need to be spent.
A lot of it.
Extremely. We, you can cut a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, and by the time you get finished at the end of the day, you're looking at a million dollars.
It, it depends on the type of waste and the level of waste you're talking about. Some of it can be accomplished administratively, and some of it may need have to come back to the council.
Now, I hate to even push this even further, but when it comes to certain things, the policies that I've been inquiring about, like when you ask for public information, and it has to be submitted to our solicitor before anybody can do anything with it, it's an insult to department heads that should be fully qualified to say, oh, okay, this information can be released, this can't. Why are we adding extra expenses every which way we can, and who is watching any of this?
I tell ya, I, I, that's the first I found of it, I asked Mary Ann, I don't know why the department heads don't give the, uh, the information.
Has it, has it historically been that way?
The department heads...
Who set the policy? Nobody could explain to me who set this policy.
I don't know who gave the okay, who said it was okay to go through the solicitor.
How long have you been a councilman?
Twelve years.
And you never approved it?
No. No.
Mary Ann, whoever told you that you had to do it, was this, is this a written policy?
No, it was procedure since I started.
And since you've started?
Yes.
Was this under just Fred Presley's term?
Yes, I've only been here just like four years.
Oh, she's, she's saying she's only been here four years. The clerk before her, I don't know what the, if they were to follow the department...
That was the procedure that was told to me from the clerk before me.
And she, and she worked very closely.
Where does this make any sense? Where are we throwing money left and right? I don't care if it's ten dollars to look at an email or something else, you know, we're in a position where we have to stop spending everything. I mean, we don't have it, we're draining funds that, if I worked for one of those unions, my God, I would be crazy right now. This is just totally... Who, I, I wanna know, why, why did you tell us that this budget was something that was gonna do us, you know, pass it, stick with the five-year plan, and we're here today?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question for you, my feelings. I think we were, you were misled, I wasn't misled.
Mm-hmm.
And my hat goes off to that councilman right there, Lachardi. Because when he was asking me questions, why are you against the five-year plan? Why do you vote against the budgets?
Right.
I said, I'm gonna give you my feelings, and what I figured out, you go get the five-year plan, and you look over the budget, and you let me know what you think. Well, three days later, he calls me, he said, this don't work. Now he took the time.
He has experience with budgets, he knows what he's looking at.
He took the time. If they would've told you that we're running a one point seven million dollar deficit the first year, one point four the second, one point two, you wouldn't have voted for that budget, would you?
No.
But everything's fine, we're doing fine, we have surpluses. As Mr. Petrosi said, they misled the employees, and they misled the taxpayers.
Well, this is the issue. You all need to listen.
Everybody said, I don't know what I'm talking about.
We need faith in people that are gonna work for us, because this isn't working. And if this isn't enough people that showed up here tonight to show that people are getting tired of it, then maybe the next meeting will be bigger, and they'll get bigger, and they'll get bigger, until people have had enough.
When they have enough, it's when they hit 'em in the pockets and it's too late.
And they already have, our taxes just keep on going up.
You haven't seen anything yet.
Oh, I know, wait for the supplements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen, my name is, uh, Tom Kunes, I live at Sixty Andrews Avenue, I've been there for forty-five years. Mr. Goslin showed us papers that was for one point three million dollars expenses. Where is the other two point seven million dollars? I would recommend...
They were, they were actually over expenditures through the last three years of budgets.
You can, you can account for one point three million?
No, 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 no. They, the, I'm accounting, what I'm saying, council approved the one point one, cost the one point one million dollars.
Right, where's the rest of the money?
The council approved, the rest of the money, wasn't money that just went out the window, it, it was there, is over expenditures that should have been brought to the council. I agree with Councilman Padula one hundred percent, that that should've been brought if, if, if a department spent, overspent three hundred thousand dollars. Now this was the first year in, since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, 'cause there's an action plan in two thousand thirteen of an over expenditure. Two thousand fourteen's budget was written by Mike Stamfler, two thousand fifteen and sixteen were by Fred Presley. Now, the shortfall in two thousand fourteen, Mr. Stamfler presented a budget that was approved, had nothing to do with the five-year plan, nothing. He, he was no part of the five-year plan. His budget was overspent by about, was it eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand?
Eight hundred thousand.
I have so many papers.
But is there any way that we can account for this other two point seven million dollars?
This is what, my question...
I would recommend that State Police have an audit.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that, but I'm, I'm asking, what I'm gonna ask the town manager and the finance director is, I want the over expenditures for each year, and why we were over eight hundred thousand dollars one year, nine hundred thousand dollars another year. So that way there, when somebody says to me, why were you over your budget by two, in two thousand fourteen, I know which department's overspent, okay?
Okay. But I wanna find out who's got their hand in the cookie jar.
We get it every year, we get it.
And I think State Police would be the only one to do it.
Can I, can I respond to that?
I know which department's overspent every single year.
Councilman, can I?
But I want it in writing.
Councilman, can I respond to him, because he, that, that is an inappropriate statement?
I didn't hear it.
Basically, I, I think I explained it earlier, bills were paid.
But the council, the council, they improved it.
Can I, can I please finish? You're asking where the money went, you made a statement about handing the cookie jar. There was no one's handing the cookie jar. Bills got paid, revenues were not there, that were expected to be there to pay the bill. So the only where, the only place that money could come from was out of the town's checking account.
But who said to take it from the rainy day fund?
It doesn't come out of the, you, you're not understanding, the rainy day fund is simply a number on paper, the money is in the bank in a checking account. When you, when you budget, you expect to have, for example, you know, one million dollars coming in, one million dollars coming out, there could be a million dollars in the bank. If you've got a million dollars in the bank, and you've got eight hundred thousand coming in, and you got one point two million dollars coming out, you're gonna take one point two million dollars in the bank, and that eight hundred thousand just went down to six hundred thousand. That's what happened.
But I would feel a lot better if we had somebody come in outside, you know, where our money's going. I still say someone's got their hand in a cookie jar.
You're incorrect, sir, if someone does come in from the outside, it's the auditor, the auditor has, produces a document every year that shows, that shows what the expenses are, what the revenues are, and shows the variances between the two.
Once again, Alan Palazzo, five Robin Lane, a couple of points of order. I don't think there's anybody who has submitted more access to public records requests, either to this town, other towns, the Attorney General, everybody. There are twenty-three exceptions to, for denial. In the past, when I was actively pursuing things, I would submit a request either directly to Malcolm, or to the town manager. I would usually have, and I always, you know, had a caveat, you've got ten days, ten business days to respond to me. The first hour's free, and Malcolm would be able to call up something within fifteen minutes. go down and sit with him and I'd have an answer. No problems there. Where this policy came from of everything going through the solicitor, I don't know. I have to ask, is that in writing anywhere? Because I used to have an XO who used to say, show it to me in writing. Hold on, Mr. Williamson, I have the floor. The second item, I just dropped track. With regard to, not the budget, it was, yeah, I totally dropped track now.
Can I speak now?
I don't know. Are you running the meeting? We have the, we have the president here. Maybe he shouldn't run the meeting.
You've addressed the issue. I'll let you respond.
I'm gonna let him. He asked me if he could respond.
Ladies and gentlemen, since I've been the town solicitor going back to 2001, I have in my hands, since 2001, every AS, AS, excuse me, APRA request for information, not only from Mr. Palazzo, but from everybody that's asked for it. You know why? It's a legal document. It's a law that requires legal interpretation. You just said there's 23 exceptions, correct?
Yes, sir.
And how many different variations of those exceptions are there?
There's 23, and if you can't read them, I guess you shouldn't be a solicitor.
Oh, okay. So, women, Alan, wait, 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 don't you want to hear all the times you've asked for information that I looked at them? There's like 42 of them in there. So 42, 42 times, and you didn't know, women, and you didn't know that I was looking at them? Because you've asked for my attorney's fees at least six times during this period of time.
Exactly, and I got a general number because you claimed it was attorney-client privilege even though you're paid by the taxpayers of this town.
Well, we found out that the manager gave them to Mr. Pinga without the redaction, so I know you got them. So the fact of the matter is, you guys know what's going on. Don't shake your arms like this. You know what's going on. The fact of the matter is, you've known it, it hasn't been a problem.
I know general figures, and a matter of fact, I go by the budget. That's what it was with the budget. Every budget that you have, there are budgeted expenditures and actual. And I believe I forwarded the email that I received from the town for several years on that. That's where it came from.
Thank you.
And I repeat it one more time. Why do we need to send requests to the solicitor? 23 exceptions. I'm sure Mark, the town clerk, or anybody else in this town should be able to read in plain English and provide that. And I'm surprised that the solicitor did not inform you at this Claims Committee meeting that any committee or subcommittee of any, the state or municipality, is required to maintain minutes. That's what the legal voice you paid for.
Elaine Manswath, CDVG manager. We've been talking about this for about an hour and a half.
Yep.
There's a resolution for approval and we're talking about nonsense. Can we get back to the subject that was on the agenda? Because all of the employees here, including myself, held up our end of the bargain of this so-called five-year plan. There's only one plan right now to fix it, and I think we need to be talking about that.
Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay? Jason?
Yes.
John stepped out?
Yes.
John's here. Jay?
Yes. And I vote yes.
Well, now-
Discussion action. Update on flood, flooding drainage on Shippey Avenue, sponsored by Councilman Mesier.
What they call hopping from the fire into the frying pan, vice versa?
Yeah.
Mr. Carullo, can you update the residents? We just, we spoke a little bit about it today.
So, councilman, since our last town council meeting, I did meet with some of the property owners in the general area. I think that was on August 10th. We discussed the town's drainage plan with regard to green infrastructure along Shippey Avenue. There's a design that has been completed and the estimated cost for that construction is approximately $1 million. That portion of the project is simply Phase One portion of the project and will not provide relief to the downhill residents who are concerned about the project. There's a second half of that project, Phase Two, which would range in cost between $350 and $650,000 that has not been designed yet. Based on those conversations and based on my presumed need for these individuals or desire for those people downhill to be provided some sort of relief, we agreed to contact the engineer and look at options, a short-term option, long-term option. And one of the options that was presented to the town was replacement of an existing undersized pipe or a pipe that may have been actually, in fact, damaged. We did have that conversation with the town engineer. That is not an option that would resolve the drainage and flooding problem in the area. So, as a follow-up to that, I asked the engineers, based on the funds that we have available, and I want to touch on that in a, in a minute, but based on the funds that we had available, I asked them to go back, take another look at the area and the drainage plan and to come up with an, an alternate plan that would provide the most relief for the, for the current budget. Now, I know there's been some statements in general with regard to numbers, anywhere between 1 and 1.2 million that was available for the drainage project. In fact, there's 500,000 in the Ward Three paving bond account available, and there's another 200,000 that Ms. Meensor from, from the CDVG program was able to secure from the state through their disaster recovery funding. So there's approximately $700,000 available. The engineers did come up with an alternate design, which is a kind of a hybrid between the green infrastructure and some new piping heading down into the, into the area that's experiencing the flooding. They are recommending that that now be the preferred plan. The cost of that plan is between 650 and 700,000. So we've actually asked the engineering firm, as well as the Department of Public Works, to start to do some investigatory work there. I think the DPW has contacted DigSafe, so if you go out in that area, you'll see some markings on the street. They're looking at their records with regard to existing utilities. Fosse &amp; O'Neil, the town's engineer, is doing the same. And they are coming up with an alternate design and construction plan. Once that, that plan is firm, I think that we would need to readdress it and come back to, come back to the council for a proposed revised plan and authorization for spending. We would then go out to bid for that construction and initiate that Phase One of the plan, which would provide them with more relief than the initial plan at a million dollars. They'd probably get a little bit more relief for the $750,000 plan, to be quite honest with you. That's where that is existing. I don't know if you have any questions.
Yeah, because we spoke a little bit about the green infrastructure program and it really was not going to give as much relief as-
Yeah, so the green infrastructure proposal on Shippey Avenue was basically to install underground cisterns, I'll call them, you know, holding tanks. So, you know, when the initial storm came, that it would, it would reduce the volume of runoff coming down the hill by an amount equal to the volume of those, those, those holding tanks. However, at a point when those tanks are full, the water will still flow down the hill. So I, I'm just gonna put this in, 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 basically, figures so that we'd understand them. So if there was, if there was a foot of water coming down the hill and surging across the property, you know, these might remove-
Three or four inches.
Three or four inches. So, my concern was that the town spends a million dollars towards the drainage project-
You should get more than three or four inches.
And that the relief is actually unrecognizable by the residents in the area. And they come back to the town and say, look, they spent the million dollars. I, I still got a foot and a half of water coming through my yard. So, so the concern was, when we met with the engineer, to tell them that we really want to invest that money wisely and to construct a project for the, the amount of money we have that would provide them with the greatest amount of relief. Again, it's still only Phase One of the project, you know, the, if, additional money becomes available, Phase Two of that green infrastructure project can go in and reduce the volume a little bit more. But as far as the piping system and that portion of the system, that will be constructed with this new alternate plan.
Can you give us an update? You know, we spoke a little bit about the, the potential easement through New Wiki Street.
Yeah, so, so I've instructed the, the engineering firm, Fosse &amp; O'Neil, to design the plan without the easement. Recently, the property owner that has the easement, he was in my office the other day and he told me he was willing to give an easement to the town, whatever that means. He told me to contact his attorneys, which I did immediately. His attorney informed me that he was not yet under, under contract, that he hadn't paid him, so he's going to wait until he gets a, a retainer before he reaches out to me. So, to be honest with you, I've, I've moved forward. I've, I've instructed our, Fosse &amp; O'Neil, our engineering firm, to design the drainage plan without the benefit of the easement. If the easement comes prior to the completion of this design, we can certainly incorporate it. But time is of the essence for the easement.
I agree.
So if we don't get that easement within the next, I don't know, couple of weeks, we're gonna move forward without it.
Yeah, I agree. Because we can't keep waiting on one individual.
And just going by what Mark said, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Galucci tonight around 6 o'clock here in Town Hall. And as Mark stated, he has asked Fosse &amp; O'Neil to do a project without the easement, but also, the gentleman also, who owns the property, says he has no problem giving us the easement based upon the agreements from 2005. This has been going on since 2005 with Wolfgang Bauer. So, you know, and, but he, he has some development that he's doing on the property, storage garages or something that he has planned. So he, if he's gonna give the easement, he wants it to be where it's not gonna interfere with his future development, which I don't blame. It's his property. If he's got future development going on, he, he wants to make sure that he's covered in that aspect. We're, we're trying, we'll, we'll have more of an update within the next week or two anyway. Pete, if you-
Pete Cottrell, 25 Milwaukee Street. So, Mr. Galucci, you had a conversation with Mr. Galucci prior to the meeting. Well, he was at my house yesterday and said, absolutely not, he will not give this town easement to that property. Well, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he's not.
I've already spoke to-
I've, I've asked to have him put that in writing for me, to bring to you.
Yeah, I don't need to-
I believe that's why, I believe that's why we said we're gonna go through with a plan without him because, especially if he's changing his mind from data.
He could be giving us two different stories.
Right. Oh, trust me, I'll be at his house tomorrow.
Pete, right to my face, right at 6 o'clock, in front of him, he said, I'd be more than happy to give the town an easement. But he also is looking at-
If you let go of what we-
No, he's not looking at that. But he wants, he wants his property back to rentable, rentable.
Right, because the town already dug it up once.
Right. Well, he wants his property back to rentable because-
Right, I understand what's going on. That's got nothing to do with me and I told him that.
But he also says he'd be more, more than happy to work with us if needed. But we have two plans now.
He wants to work with you. Look, we all know, David, you know, everybody here knows. He's gonna, you know what he's doing. You uncondemn his house, he'll let you through.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a separate health issue.
Mark, I'm gonna tell you something right now. That is not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen.
Okay? He has to pass his fire inspections, his electrical inspection, his plumbing inspection, and his building inspection before that's habitable again.
I understand that. I understand.
And nobody's gonna make a deal, nobody is gonna make a deal with him to make it hap, if he, if he passes all his inspections based upon the building official, electrical inspector, he's already passed his fire inspection.
Dave, Dave, we're on flooding, we're not on Galucci's come-down property.
No, I, I, you just stated that we're gonna make a deal.
Because you can't trade one person's safety for another person's-
Jay, I'm talking, all right?
Guys.
We're talking. I haven't directly-
I'm not a councilman? I don't, I don't get to speak?
I'm talking directly to him.
Enough.
Yours is coming, don't worry.
I'm sure it is.
Can I, can I speak?
Go ahead, Mark.
So, Mr. Cottrell, I myself spoke with Mr. Galucci and I was very clear, as you know I can be.
Absolutely.
And I told him, there would absolutely be no quid pro quo, that the two items are separate and distinct, that the issues with his rental property has nothing to do with the easement. We're not gonna combine those. If he's willing to give the town an easement, I'm willing to talk to his attorneys about the easement. Time is of the essence. I already informed him that we're moving ahead without the easement. He's very clear on that. I did, I called his attorney on Friday. I spoke with his attorney. His attorney said, I'm not gonna talk to you about the easement, he hasn't paid me yet. So, I gave the attorney my contact number. I told him time was of the essence, contact me immediately. I'm waiting for the attorney to contact me. If he doesn't contact me, if we don't have a resolution for the easement, we've already started the preliminary work on designing without the easement.
I got that. Another thing, my, my problem doesn't have anything to do with this Greenway stuff. It has to do with the pipe that the town replaced a couple, a couple years ago, probably five, six years ago. You cannot choke the water in the front, in the back. You can't. Why is it, hey, Fred Presley said there was what? A huge rainy day fund. There was plenty of money to fix it then.
Yeah. He told us we weren't running a deficit either and the check's in the mail.
Here's my question to you. You're my councilman, correct?
Yep.
You took an oath to serve me.
Yep.
Correct? I'm gonna ask you one question. You willing to help me right now?
Well, I'm gonna-
No, yes or no?
No, I, I, I don't have to answer just yes or no. I think I'm allowed to give an explanation.
I asked you a yes or no question.
Mark, the $500,000-
Why don't you have the result, I'm asking you a question.
I'm asking him a question, guys.
Answer my question before you ask a question.
Well, Mark, the $500,000 for the road bond money, is that, is that specifically have to go to this project or could it go to other projects in Ward Three?
It's, it's, it's a ward account.
So it's up to my discretion where this money goes? So I'm putting $500,000 to this project. So if you consider that nothing, then that's fine. But I think a half a million dollars of this project is doing something. So to say that I'm doing nothing or I'm ignoring this project is not factual. When we had a meeting where we were trying to discuss this last month, who did you uninvite to that meeting? Who did you uninvite to that meeting?
You.
Me, correct.
Because what did the minutes say? Go back to the minutes.
I'm not talking about the minutes.
When Mr. Carullo was supposed to set the meeting up. It's different when he sets it up-
You uninvited your councilman that you want-
Jay, I'm talking. I'm talking, Jay. You'll have your time. I'm talking.
I know, this is, you heard this all last month?
Then do something about it, David.
I-
Look, I'm asking him right now.
The man has been trying.
I'm not, look, David, I'm gonna ask him one more time. Are you my councilman? Yes or no?
Yes.
Are you willing to help me?
I'm trying to, yes.
Within 24 hours, can you get in touch with DEM and have my soil tested? Because of the petroleum and the contaminants that are in my fucking yard.
Hey.
I, I, I apologize. I have people getting sick.
The best of us, Lee.
You don't understand that. Nobody understands that.
All right.
I have a dog that's having seizures because he drinks the freaking water. Because what does a dog do when he goes to urinating? He drinks from the water. They don't know any better. My disability, okay, is chemical related. I hope to freaking god that it's, that it's not from that water. Because it's the town problem and it needs to be addressed.
Pete, all, all kidding aside, I, I feel for you. I have a constituent sitting right in the back of his room that I've personally witnessed, sitting there in eight feet of water up to his neck, trying to bail himself out because of town drainage. I'm trying every single year to try to get money put aside for him. And you know what?
Listen to what you're saying.
He's been very cordial with it, but he could be up here too, very vocal and he-
Listen to what you're saying. You're trying.
But you know what? We're trying. And when I hear this heavy flooding come, I send him a message. I'll text him. I'll say, how you making out down there? You know, do you need help? The town helps him. We try to the best we can.
Do we get that?
And you know what? I don't know. But you know what? If you're gonna, I'll be honest with you, if Mr. Izzy back there, great guy as he is, if he was calling me names, threatening me and saying, I'm gonna kick you-
I have never called him a name.
I'm not saying you. There's been constituents here that have been threatening to, to beat councilmen up. I want to go to Mr. Izzy's property and say, hey, how you doing today? I would avoid him as far as I possibly could. And I've gone down to his property, he's always been cordial, even during the toughest times. There's days I pulled up and I saw him with his son, sitting there with bags. I felt so bad for the guy. I thought, you know, and he came out frustrated, but knowing that we're trying, we're, we're trying to figure out ways. He's also trying to figure out ways. He's brought construction companies in to sway him away from his building. He's done things. We're, we're continuing. He's, he's made a plan for you to avoid the easement. We could still be going through the easement, wait till the winter, till the house goes back and taken by eminent domain.
All they gotta do, Dave, all they have to do, Dave, is take the large pipe that they put in the street behind me and come through my property.
That's not correct.
You say that-
It's not correct.
It's correct.
It is not correct, sir.
How, how can you choke water? How can you take a pipe that's 16 inches this big and reduce?
Sure. In increasing, in putting a new pipe in your yard and in-
I told you when you need-
Are you an engineer?
No, but I know how to move water.
Okay.
I know how to move water. It's, it's common sense.
Listen, I'm not gonna debate you.
Are you willing to help? You can laugh all you want, Jay.
We're laughing at her and she, she-
Are you?
I'm trying to help, yes. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm not an engineer either.
Okay, fine, fine. We're not, you're not an engineer.
All right, Pete.
Next.
I have a constitutional right to be heard. And I'm asking.
That constitutional right is correct. However, it is a reasonable overtime. They believe they've given you a reasonable overtime. Please respect their opinion. If that's the question, I believe they've answered.
He hasn't answered my question.
He has. He said yes three times.
So you're willing to help me? So this is what I want you to do. I want you to reach out to DEM tomorrow and get back to me within 24 hours. I want my soil tested.
Dave, next.
Is there something we could do in 24 hours?
Absolutely. You can get the ball rolling, Jay.
The property owner can call DEM himself.
What's that?
And, and ask them to come and test his soil.
I have, but I need help from the town.
What have they said to you?
I have to reach out to the town council. I've reached out to FEMA. You got, Jay, Jay, I'm not trying to be, to, to own you or whatever, or, or, or a puppet, a puppet or a punk, or what did you call me? A fake? I'm the third state from fake.
All right, come on, we-
I just want-
Enough with the personal attacks on both sides. We need to stop. Let's just move on.
I just want him to commit to me.
We know you've got a flooding issue. We know it, okay?
I want him to commit to me that he will help me and call DEM. That's what I'm asking. That's my one question that I came up here, but things got heated. I apologize. Are you willing to help me with, with the, don't look at him.
Well, I'm not an expert. I'm sorry. I, I looked to the town manager. That's what I'm supposed to do.
What, let me ask you something.
I'm not understanding what you're asking for.
I'm asking him to call-
Why are you asking him to call DEM?
Because that's-
You can have DEM come out to your property.
I called them, they, I have to have, reach out to my council, is what I told them.
To have DEM come and investigate your property.
Yeah, but I've never heard that.
Yes.
Who, who at DEM did you speak to, I will call them.
Anna Cole. I, I will call you to, if you give me a card, I will call you with her, with the extension and the whole nine yards.
Thank you, Mr. Carrulo.
I'm just trying to get my yacht fixed, I'm, I'm being held hostage here. I wanna sell my house, Steve, Jay, everybody, I cannot.
Pete, you know what, all kidding aside, the, the gentleman that was, was it you, who was here last month, the one that's getting flooded?
We all get flooded.
I personally said it's cheaper to buy his house than fix the drainage over there. I, I, I've honestly said that, maybe the town should just buy it, put a giant swale in there.
If my land, if my land is contaminated with petroleums.
Pete, think about this, we're gonna spend a million dollars on drainage.
The town's gonna buy it. The town's gonna buy it anyway.
We could buy the gentleman's house that's getting affected, the two, three houses, for half that, we'd be all set, not to worry about flooding anymore.
David, if, if, if my, if my land is contaminated with petro- petroleum and contaminate, the town's gonna land up by in my house anyway.
Thank you.
My name is Roy Blair from sixty-four Shippey Avenue, um, I'm basically right at ground zero of this flooding issue. Now, for this new plan, where does it start from? In front of my house, it, it starts right there in front of sixty-four Shippey Avenue with bottom of Agnes, coming down from Reed, coming over from West. I catch it from three directions, three different hills.
You catch it from the Reed Coventry side?
Yes.
Yeah.
My entire backyard fills every, every, every rain, I can give you a video, you've probably seen it, of the waterfall going down a walk in my backyard. There was also said that it is this one point two, a one point five million dollar bond to go towards this flooding issue. That was drawn up through this whole other thing, what happened to that bond?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the bond, and that's, that's the statement that I made earlier, that there was apparently some discussion about a bond, there's no one point five million dollar bond.
This was brought up by Ed Giroux, who had us all in a meeting over at the senior center.
I can't attest to what Mr. Giroux said.
I understand that you were in an office at that time, last October, telling us they received a road bond from the government to help fix the issue here.
Each council member got a million dollars.
There was a, there was a, there was a five million dollar road bond, million dollars per ward for street paving. Of that five million dollars, Councilman, Councilman Giroux, and now Councilman Messier have dedicated a half a million dollars towards resolving the drainage issue in that area. There's no one point five million dollar bond, I don't know where that information came from.
That came straight from Ed Giroux.
I, I can't help you with that, I wasn't at the meeting and I, I have no idea what any individual would have told you, but that information, if that came from him, that is incorrect information.
Now, you said you've driven, uh, drawn up a new plan to start alleviating this water, okay? Where does this start?
It starts on.
I haven't seen anybody in front of my house, they're all behind, over, behind the field behind me, I can't remember.
It starts on Shippey Avenue and it runs down West Street and it intersects with Le Champs.
Where on Shippey?
I'm, I'm just asking, cause like where my house is, there's one drain on the low side of the street. Takes a little time to save.
That's real, that's what plant brought.
So, it's right, it starts right here, there's some underground retention that would go here, tying it to twenty-four inch, coming down.
Sits here.
All the way down to Le Champs, so this is all underground pipe.
No, see where this is, right here, this is agus, comes straight down. Water comes down as well, so you're not even gonna catch any of this water that's building up in this area. Yes, it is.
Okay.
If you go out there, look at the drains that are on the high side of the street, high side, three of them, the basins go down a foot and a half. Down to a ten inch pipe that goes down one, down to another, and those three basins go into one basin on the low side. Where that pipe he's showing goes to Le Plant, which is above my address.
When you say it goes down a foot and a half, um, I've seen some basins and I'm just, and again, I'm not familiar with the area.
You're talking about the some.
That, that basin actually goes into a drain which goes into a deeper basin, is, is that what's going, is that happening over there? Or is it just a foot and a half basin?
Foot and a half basin.
Cause if you look on the backside or the side, there's usually a pipe that goes down to a, like a holding tank, and then often, I'm just asking if that's what's there.
That's on the high side of the street, and that is one of them that comes down from here, that basin then goes to another one, and then goes to the low side of the street and it goes in between my house and another. If you look at the, the one that's right in front of my house, which now has a broken grate on it, there are rocks right there, you can basically put your hand in the drain and touch the bottom of the basin.
Foot and a half.
About a foot, foot and a half. Where you're show- showing that plan, that completely bypasses around the place that floods. If you. Don't answer this, go out there, come, Mike, you said you've, you've been with these people, met with the residents that live there, didn't meet with me, I'm at ground zero, I've been here.
I didn't say that I met with you, I said I met with.
Met with some residents.
I met with two property owners, that's correct.
You need to meet with more.
Thank you.
Just each of you again for the record.
Eileen Anderson, hi, um, you know, phase one, you said it's not gonna completely fix the problem, right? And so you need a phase two, is phase two, is the intent of phase two to completely fix this problem?
Well, when you say completely fix, it's the, it is, phase, phase one and phase two combined are going to provide the most relief possible, okay?
To the satisfaction of these people?
There is, there is no, no, there, there is no absolute resolution to a drainage problem in this particular area.
In this area, we, they cannot, so they're always gonna have to deal with some flooding.
I'm not sure to what degree, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be flooding, but there will be drainage issues.
There'll be, okay, so you guys, maybe you oughta buy the, buy them out, you know, truthfully. If they're all, if there's always gonna be drainage, drainage issues, you just kinda toss some money where it's not really gonna help, you know? Did, and the second question I have is, did the state engineers take a look at the phase one project?
State engineers?
Yeah.
I, I believe it was permitted, it was permitted through Rhode Island Department of Environmental.
Okay, so they probably haven't actually seen it, they're just gonna wait until it, it gets started and then they'll come out and take a look?
As far as.
The, the design?
No, the state had reviewed the design, that's correct, yeah, of the phase one, yes.
They did? Of phase one, they reviewed the design and issued a permit?
Which, which, so, so, so that we're not confusing issues, right?
Phase one.
There's phase one, that is a million dollar project.
Right. Right.
Okay, so that's the project that we directed the engineers to revise.
Right.
So, they, they're reducing the size of that project and then incorporating underground piping.
Right.
Which will move the water from point A to point B. That is the new, let's call it the new phase one, let's, for example, so that has not been reviewed by Rhode Island Department of Environmental.
Okay, so that hasn't been reviewed.
It's not.
And, uh, the, uh, the council understands that the estimate that he gave for phase two of somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a total wild ass guess because you've got no design. So, you can't estimate without a design, understand?
Yeah, so, so the, so the estimate was between three hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's an extreme variance.
Yeah, well, even. It, it's a big variance, but it, it could be, it could still end up two million dollars because nobody's looked at, you don't have a design, if you don't have a design, you don't have a, a good estimate, bottom line. So, this could end up costing quite a bit more than you ever anticipated, and so, you might wanna take a look at some other alternatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Update on playground on Factory Street?
Are you sure?
Jay? Yeah, alright, Mark.
So, so the town applied for two, uh, twenty sixteen Rhode Island Department of Environmental Recreation Grant for a playground at Factory Street. The grant application was submitted in May of twenty sixteen and the town received the award in September of twenty sixteen. Is a eighty twenty grant, which means the state will pay eighty percent, the town pays twenty percent. The grant was written for a total cost of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars coming from the state and thirty-eight thousand dollars coming from other sources. Those sources would include, um, an in-kind match of labor from the town of four thousand dollars for site work. Uh, it would also include a donation in labor from a local construction company of four thousand dollars, also for site work and installation. The local contribution in total cash would be five thousand dollars, and there's a contribution of about twenty-five thousand dollars from Thunder Mist for a project that they were constructing up there for an orchard and, um, a gazebo or, uh, whatever they ended up putting up there.
Yeah.
The total of those contributions is thirty-eight thousand dollars, so the town would have a hundred thousand dollars, um, coming from DEM and we'd be trying to match that with in-kind and donated money as much as possible.
Which we would have to pay first, correct, and then they would reimburse us?
So, so basically the way these grants work is similar to, it's exactly like the fishing pier, it's a reimbursement, so the town has to front the money, has to construct the project, that completion of construction, then the town submits its invoices for payment of the project as well as its matching fees, and then around, the, the state of Rhode Island will then forward a check to the town for the hundred thousand dollars. The grant is good, um, the, the expiration of the grant is twenty eighteen, so it's good until, um, September twenty eighteen. So, the expectation is that sometime over the winter, someone from the town, likely me, will be writing an RFP to go out to bid for, um, design, purchase of equipment and construction of the, um, of the playground.
Needs to be completed by the end of September of two thousand and eighteen.
It needs to be completed by September, so, so the expectation is if we can get an RFP out over the winter, that we can do a bid award in the spring and hopefully have construction complete by the end of the, uh, of the grant period. DEM has had a practice of granting extensions, they granted multiple year extensions to the fishing pier. My preference is that we meet the deadlines that, uh, that are included in the grant, so the hope is that, uh, we can get the RFP out and, uh, and get the project under construction over the summer.
Of course, obviously some of this was held up because you've been, you've taken that second role.
Well, it's, 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 it's basically been put on the shelf.
Yeah.
Um, until I have such time that I can start to work on that project along with many other projects.
Anna.
Mark, it was announced by, um, Councilman Giroux, I believe it was October or November before he left office, that he took a Ward Three fund of fifty thousand dollars and appropriated that amount of money to this playground.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you mention that.
So, I didn't mention that, and that, so I missed that announcement. So, when I, when I, when I wrote the grant, the intention of the grant was for it to be self-sustaining, however, um, I, you are correct in that the councilman at the time did dedicate fifty thousand dollars in capital, uh, funding, I guess, towards the playground, unbeknownst to me. If I would've known that, I probably would've done a little bit more extravagant of a playground.
Okay, so where's. What's going on with that fifty thousand now?
So, so there's forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars remaining in that account, and I believe twenty-five hundred dollars was expended, um, at the request of the councilman for some tree removal on Main Street.
Which councilman?
I believe, I believe it was Giroux.
Are you aware of this? It's the Ward Three account, do you know what that money was spent on for sure?
Yes, John, yeah, John told me, John, what, you told me, what was the twenty-five hundred used for?
He just mentioned.
It was the tree removal, okay.
It was tree removal on Main Street, so, uh, that, that is, that is a, a, a funding resource and, you know, with these discussions, knowing the current budget situation, so in my opinion, these discussions should be ongoing, so I do have a five thousand dollar match included in there and, and, and potentially.
Well, if you have sufficient funding for this playground without that.
We, we, I've gotta look at those funds.
Forty-some odd thousand dollars left, I would say, yes, it should, that forty thousand should be appropriated to something to help this town versus a playground.
So, what I'm, what I'm saying is that we need to affirm that we can meet those in-kind matches through labor from the, from the Department of Public Works and donated labor from a construction company, I, I, I prefer not to give the name of the construction company right now.
No, nobody's asking you to, that's fine.
But I just wanna affirm and confirm that, and that's available, and I need to know, you know, the talent level at Department of Public Works with regard to building and installing playgrounds, I'm sure that they have talent over there, hopefully that they can do it, so that'll save us.
So, if you can, if you can bypass that Ward Three fund, are, are you saying that you think you can, if you get assurances from all of that?
I'm saying, I don't have any assurances, I would never give you an assurance unless I was sure. So, so at the end of the day, what I would say is.
Oh, you're just, we're gonna squeeze that cheek one of these days.
My, my goal, my goal, and I'm, and I, and, 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 at that time, hopefully I'll only be the planner. But my goal would be to come in.
Maybe councilman, planner, town manager.
Would be to come in on time, on time and within the budget, in the budget as I have presented it.
Okay, so, in the event that you accomplish this, and we don't have to touch that Ward Three money, is Ward Three councilman prepared to use that maybe for the people that are suffering on Shippey Ave? And put that money in with whatever money is going from the town to maybe get these people some type of relief?
I don't wanna say yes or no, but I don't know if forty-seven thousand is gonna, is gonna make that big of a difference in the project for, it's gonna be about a million dollars, but I don't wanna say.
Every little bit counts in a town that has no money.
I don't wanna say yes or no, what's gonna happen to that money or if it's gonna be needed for this project, so.
Thank you.
Vendor invoicing. Um, not gonna beat a dead horse all night, plain and simple, not just vendors, but all clients and whatever it may be from the town should have their invoicing in no later than sixty days. We need to put some sort of resolution together, if you wanna change it to thirty days, ninety days, whatever it may be, um, you can look at that. Uh, Mark and I have also talked about other options that we'll probably bring into you the next council meeting for billing and how to, how to, uh, bill, whether it's, uh, retainers, whether, whatever it may be. We're, we're gonna discuss that with the next couple of weeks, we'll bring that back to you, uh, the next council meeting. That's all I have on vendor invoicing, uh, we just need to know, what's everybody, what's everybody's, uh?
My, my opinion is thirty days. Let's make it quick, you know, I, as a business owner, when I send out my invoices, I need to get paid, so I want those invoices in, and so my opinion would be thirty days.
And I, and I, I'll agree with that, but I also wanna make sure it's detailed, um, I've seen, and, and from our IT people, exchange server, for what? What kind of server?
It should be detailed.
Listen, we gotta have a meeting with different, different problems, we're gonna have a meeting about IT, there's a few things that we need a meeting over, and, um.
Well, again, and I think some of that would have to do with the, uh, town manager, so we could, is that, is that pertinent to wait till October tenth? I mean, as long as, we could still set the resolution as far as invoicing goes. And then if we need to change it, we can change it.
We, I don't think so, I, I really, I think, I think the five of us need to get together and I understand that there's things you can and can't talk about in a private meeting, but I think the five of us need to be on the same page, no matter what that page is, and we have to come together with some sort of a plan prior to the new town manager coming in.
No, I'm not talking about, I, I, I think you're getting confused, I'm talking about invoicing only, I mean.
Invoicing, I, when you get to invoicing, I, when you go out to, when you have a vendor, there should be a contract with that vendor, I would think, no, no matter what, what vendor it is, whether it's busing for, um, the summer program or you're dealing with a, a magician I had at, uh, Crompton Playground, he's a vendor, there was a contract, Mark signed the contract, you know, and, and it's, and it's pretty simple, the do's and don'ts, this is what he expects, this is what we expect, Mark signed it, he signed it, and, and that's it, and he gave, he gave the invoice, we gave him the check, and, and it's pretty simple.
There's just things getting spent.
I know you're not a vendor.
That wasn't approved by the council, uh, you got an acting town manager that don't have a clue in what happened nine months ago.
You don't have to qualify that, counsel.
You said that lovingly.
I mean, we're overspending budgets, there's gonna be a different way that we do business. Instead of maybe, I don't know, we, what do I do? Bring everything out in public or bring it out?
No, I don't think so, I don't think, I think the five of us need to meet about things that we feel are too loose and talk about it and get on the same page, period. I agree. Cause you look foolish.
I think I sent an email to the entire council that I'd like to discuss certain items, and I put seven or eight different items on there, and legally you had to inform every individual that you wanted to speak about, um.
That were, that were department heads, no vendors, you don't need vendor, you don't need approval for vendors, you don't need approval for, uh, reorganization, you don't need, uh, approval for, for any of that. Am I, am I correct? I already know my answer, when I'm asking you, I already know what the answer is.
Well, it depends on how you, how you, how you structure what you're talking about, so if you're talking in generalities and not specifically about an individual or, or a department head, you, you can't do that, I mean, so if you were.
And you can't mention an individual, because. You're gonna get, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble, so as long as you know that, before we step into that meeting.
It's funny. I think there's enough to talk about without mentioning individual people.
Or their positions.
Or their, or their positions, yeah, absolutely, just generalities, like guidelines.
Right, and I would set that up sooner or later.
Exactly, John, guidelines.
So, my question, again, we can, I'm just looking at the calendar real quick. We can, I'm just looking at the calendar real quick. We can meet on the twelfth, next Tuesday. Does anybody? We got to put what's on the agenda. Is it executive session or open session?
Executive session.
Executive session.
Five council people. Leave us the tape recorder.
Six, seven, what's the time? Six. I can open the meeting? I can put in the code? I can do all that?
Yep.
Have hockey practice.
You're welcome.
Now, going back to invoicing. We need a resolution on the next council meeting for thirty days. Does that sound good for everybody? Yes.
Helene Anderson, uh, give all the current vendors, um, and, and contractors sixty days to get all of, up, caught up to date. And then tell them, um, after, you know, November, they're going to have to, uh, give you, um, their bills every thirty days.
And that's, and that's pretty much what we have done over the past month. That's what we have done over the past month. We haven't done all vendors, but the ones we know we've had problems with. That's, he did bring up a good point. We do have contracts with some of our vendors, our I T people. They could have dates set in it also, a day set in it. So we might want to just review that real quick and make sure it's within spec and we can go from there. All right, Citizen Appreciation Day event, Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, so if you recall last year, we had a Citizens Appreciation Day in October. Um, it was a really nice event. It was a food truck event. Uh, we had fireworks. We had some games. It was, it was our first time doing this. And I think everyone had a really nice time. We, our, our numbers were a little low because of the time. We planned for Saturday and the weather wasn't good, so we ended up on a Sunday. We were competing with the Patriots game against the Steelers. So it was good, but, and this is a council event. This is why I'm bringing it up in front of you. It was expensive. Now, last year, um, it was, you know, the board, we ran it, but we weren't really aware of the numbers. When I took over, I asked for the numbers and they were pretty high. That event cost about nineteen thousand dollars. Um, and there was four thousand in sponsorships. We don't have those sponsorships this year. We have a thousand in a sponsorship. We've lost three. But I can't, in good faith, and the committee, I don't think in good faith, can, you know, ask for the money, especially given the events of the, the last few weeks, um, to spend in a four hour period. To me, it's ridiculous to spend fifteen thousand dollars on fireworks. We've all seen fireworks before, right? Um, but this can still be a great event because what we're doing is, we are going to bring together the trunk or treat event, which Lori Swanson runs. We're going to bring the food trap trucks back. Um, we have a lot of games and, uh, activities that are planned for this. So we want to make it a really nice event. But as a committee, we don't want to make the decision to say no to the fireworks because it's a council event. So that's why I'm bringing it before you. There was money taken last year. I think it was from the recreation fund. I can't think of the exact line item. Yeah, so again, my opinion, um, unless something miraculous happens and one of the sponsors that we've reached out to or one of the businesses that we've reached out to sponsors fireworks, I don't think the town should foot the bill for it, given certain circumstances right now, but that's up to you guys to decide.
How much of the fireworks on?
Well, it depends. Anywhere, depending on what you want, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. Again, for a four hour event and, and I think we can still make it a great event. I think people will have a really nice time.
You could still hold that as a possibility if you got someone to donate, somebody donated it.
Trying to get a sponsorship, absolutely. I'm, I'm not giving up hope on that, but we are getting close to the date of October fourteenth when this is scheduled to, to happen.
We lost our biggest sponsor from last year.
I do, yeah, I know.
Speaking to John, um, and that was Centerville Bank. And after what happened here a month ago, that was a big influence on that. So when we sit here and talk about certain things in public and embarrass certain people who are presidents of banks, they don't want to do anything to the town anymore. So we lose sponsors. So that's what happened. Three thousand dollars. Go on.
Is that the?
So, so the date is, um, October fourteenth?
People should learn to keep their mouth shut.
Four P M to nine P M. Guys, the other, the other thing that you have to consider, um, you know, if we have fireworks, there's a fire detail involved, like last year, because of the weather delay, we had to go through the night with the, you know, the fire detail. It ended up costing about seventeen hundred dollars for fire detail. That's a lot of money.
One, one other thing before I forget, um, if, if we do have fireworks, keep in mind that the dog pound, which I know was an issue brought up last year.
Right, people were upset with the fact that we.
No, it wasn't even just that. I think even like the, the, the people at the, at the, they didn't realize it was going to happen. So maybe they can make some kind of arrangements for either the animals to go somewhere else or do something, so.
Right.
Cause it's right, I mean, it is right there.
We can certainly let them know.
Just the fireworks to happen this week.
The, the other thing, guys, that, that we've cut is the, um, the stage and the band. Because we felt that people weren't going there for the band. They provided music, but originally we thought it was going to be an event where people would sit in the stands and they'd watch the band and that didn't, didn't really occur. So we're going to, um, as far as I know, ninety five point one is provided.
I don't want to keep everyone.
Yeah, I know, I don't want to keep everyone going, but I want you guys to know.
Top of my head, a few ideas we, we could, together on.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Shirley.
Are you all raising the money to have the festival or are you using town money?
There is a, I think it was a budget item. It was a budget item, if I remember correctly.
That's, that's town.
We are taking non-essential purchases.
Right, so what I'm saying is, and again, I wanted to bring it before council. I don't think we should touch any money. Um, we have a thousand, it's a little bit more than a thousand at this point, but we're still working to get sponsorship so that we pay for this event without touching anything.
But you guys, I mean, all you got to do is call Bradford would give five grand. I mean, Centerville don't want to give us three thousand?
They're not, Angelo. We've reached out to Bradford. They're going to make a basket of soap in. Which is, I'm not making fun of that, but they're not giving us five thousand dollars.
Well, for nine years, the town has put on a car show in the middle of the summer with no town money spent.
You can do without, without.
And it's a great event. Hundreds of people come and there's tons of free food and things that are given out because a lot of people work very hard raising that money. And I think that can be done again. I totally disagree if one dollar is spent from the town budget, whether it's a line item or not on a fall festival. Sorry.
I, and I agree with you. I agree. I just wanted to bring that before council so that you have.
And, and just, there is, I'm not saying, I, I, I agree with some of what Helene just said, most of it actually. Um, we are cutting non-essential expenditures. As much of a greater event as this is, or could be, there is fifteen or there was fifteen thousand dollars put into recreation to answer the question about what was a budgeted item. However, that fifteen could be used for something else.
How mu- what would, what would we be spending money on if we didn't have the fireworks? I mean, like, like police detail. We wouldn't need a fire detail, right, if we don't have fireworks, correct?
We're going to need a, a, a fire detail, police detail, but I think we can cover that.
Listen, didn't we, when we did that appreciation.
What do you need, all right, you go to River Point on any given day, especially you go on this Saturday, you have opening day of soccer. There's probably going to be about a thousand people there.
Right.
You go around the park and you have possibly a Babe Ruth game going on or, uh, an A A U baseball team playing. You go further down, you could have softball going on, then you could have, uh, Cal Ripken and you could have kids playing basketball, people playing tennis. So the park is used by a lot of people at any given time. So if you need a police detail for this event, then why wouldn't you need it for every single day? It do- it doesn't make sense. And I'm not knocking the police at all, please.
Need it. We can afford it. You don't need a detail.
I think we can put on an event. I mean.
Yeah. The fireworks you did, but I'm not sure you need.
I don't think we, we might not, we might not.
I'm just curious how much, I'm just curious how much it costs.
Decide that you don't need them. What do you mean?
There's, there's a lot of ways to put on a, hang on, there's a lot of ways to put on a low-cost event. A really good event with, with not a lot of funds. I've done it for a long time. So again, I'd like to work, if you want, work together.
Absolutely.
All right.
You know?
Yep, okay. All right, um, do not, do not knock registry. The reason I put this on, Jay, one of your constituents, Kerry Saint, Jakes, sent me an email asking me about if the town had a do not knock registry at the police department or anywhere in the town. Do we?
They have to get a permit.
Come get a permit.
They have to. We already did that.
They would get a list of do not knock registries. So some towns have it where, so let's say, uh, Sol- Solace City wants to knock door to door to sell you solar. They would have to get a permit.
We already passed that.
I don't know if, but I don't think we have a do not knock registry.
I call, oh, I don't know about that, but.
That's what I'm asking.
I called the police. There was people in Brookfield Flat knocking on doors.
They have to get a permit, but in some towns, when you go in and get that permit, you get a do not knock registry, so. Anna puts her name on there, no solicitor. And, and, and my, my suggestion, because a friend of mine has this in Warwick and it's, I pick on it because he did a real nice job on his house. It doesn't even look like a no soliciting sign. But it's on his doorstep. It was decorative and he put no solicitor. He's never had anybody knock on his door, but his neighbor does. So that was my suggestion to the individual, but they just asked me if there was a do not knock registry. I said I'll have to check into it. Well.
Yeah, you could.
When, when they get the permit.
Feel good.
Oh, they get the, well, let's move on. Let's move on. Intern Town Manager Report.
I think I'll pass, Councilman.
All right, upcoming appointments, Planning Board, Technology Committee, Artic Redevelopment Committee, Sewer Use Tax Board of Review, Board of Tenants Affairs, Public Comment. Any public comment? Anybody from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it.